Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, and this is the Salinas City Council meeting. Council, I've started the meeting. This meeting is available in Spanish for members of the public in attendance and on Zoom. Translation devices can be obtained in the foyer. City Clerk?
Buenas tardes. Esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público y en Zoom las unidades de traducción se pueden obtener en la entrada de la rotonda.
Please join me in standing for the, in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Sandoval, would you lead us?
Ready? The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with the religion of such and all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barrera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilmember Osornio.
Here.
Councilmember Rocha.
Here.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Present.
Mayor Creighton.
Here.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, we have a special meeting today, which means public comments are restricted to the items on the special meeting agenda pursuant to California Government Code 54954.3B. The public may comment on the scheduled agenda items as they are considered. We will hold public comment until then. If you wish to make a comment on either one of those items, you're encouraged, obviously, to attend the city council meeting in person or on Zoom and use the raise hand icon. Emailed public comments received have been distributed to the council, to the mayor, to the city clerk, and will be entered into the permanent record. Public comments will be limited to 90 seconds per speaker for this special meeting. I may further limit the time for public comments depending on the agenda schedule. That's not true. I'm going to keep it at 90 seconds. Just read what was directly in front of me. With that, we'll go on to our first item on, for our study session. I know we are on a tight timeline. Item 24-254, Proposed Fiscal Year 2024/2025 Operating and Capital Improvement Program. And we have our interim city manager, our interim finance director, our assistant city manager, and the executive team here to give the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, welcome, and to the public, welcome. Who do we have advancing the, is that you, Alexis? Perfect. So I'm going to try to do my best to set the stage for everyone in that front row, second row audience to also adhere to time limits. So I will be quick. Before you today, started in December is the fiscal year budget for 2425. We have checked in with the community. You'll hear more about that in a moment. We've checked in with the Finance Committee briefly, and so there's been a lot of work done. I want to thank city staff who really, every day for the last six months, have been engaged in this discussion. So I want to start with the budget message. There is a lot going on in this city. We have continued budget efforts. You're going to see some groundbreaking in the coming months on Hebron Family Center. We're out to bid already on Beronda Road and road congestion relief. We have continued work on the general plan and all the efforts that you have seen in this chamber over the last many months is ongoing. We have infrastructure projects carrying over from prior years adopted budgets that continue to the tune of 120 million. You have ARPA, which you have been instrumental on in terms of getting us to keep the projects moving. We're down to our last 17 million example for unencumbered projects. Our budget work was guided by the strategic plan of your work in early January of 2023. It's also been guided by the resident input, by your input, by the Salinas Plan and the many facets of that. It includes a five-year forecast because a couple among you asked for that. It's a very difficult thing to do, to predict tomorrow, let alone a five-year forecast, but we've done that. We recognize ongoing city liabilities, the focus on sustainability. Everyone in this room one day will be gone, but the city of Salinas, in theory, will continue. Prepare, I want to, we need to look at revenue enhancements and opportunities in the years ahead, in months and years ahead. Next slide, Alexis. These are just a snapshot of some of the unfunded liabilities. They're eye dropping. If you have any questions when we go through this, but of course, CalPERS, the pension system, workers' compensation, OPEB unfunded liability, our general liability, compensated absences. What's that, Mr. Interim City Manager? That's everyone's time as a city employee, paid time off, et cetera. That's not part of a captured amount. So that's also unfunded. And with that, we'll go to the first one, which is community engagement. And we, there we go. See, we're ready.
Yeah. Hello, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Anna Mreese, and I'm the Recreation Park Superintendent for the city. I'm pleased to be here tonight to give you an overview of the budget engagement strategy and report on priorities identified by community this budget cycle. But before I start, I want to give a huge shout out to my colleagues, Monica Gurmila and Jose Arriola, who led this effort and worked with library and community services, community development, administration, fire departments, who supported the implementation of this year's strategy. Okay. So as all of you know, we've been working really hard to increase participation in this super important process. The strategy this year included traditional and best practices for gathering input. We conducted an online survey and two community meetings, and most importantly, we met community where they were via pop-up activities. So overall, over 2,500 residents provided input on their priorities for this budget cycle. Okay. As part of the online survey, we collected data around what council district people lived in and wanted to understand more about them. As you can see, the majority of respondents live and work in the city of Salinas. We received over 1,600 responses on the online survey. And as mentioned, we hosted two community meetings, one in Spanish and one in English. I do want to take a minute to highlight the awesome finance team. I think this has been the first time in a long time that the entire budget presentation was delivered in Spanish. Okay. So we met with community throughout the entire city to conduct those pop-up activities. We met them at food bank distribution sites, libraries, recreation centers, the mall, I mean, you name it. Those are just a few locations. And throughout this effort, we engaged over 800 residents. So this slide includes top priorities identified by community, as you can see, ensuring timely response to calls, transportation, and of course, affordable, fair housing services, where the top three priorities identified. And this slide represents the reoccurring themes we heard from community throughout the process, parks, programs, services, technology. Those are also important for community. So now I'd like to pass it on to Selena Andrews, Assistant Finance Director, to take us through the rest of the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Selena Andrews, Assistant Finance Director. In the interest of time, I will be very brief, but you will have plenty of time at the end of the presentations to answer questions and provide input. When we started looking at the numbers, we identified significant expenditure increases versus revenues from the prior year in the general funds. Some of those increases were employee compensation, pension benefits, healthcare, and insurance This led us to identifying budget balancing strategies, such as maintaining a status quo budget, increasing our vacancy factor to 5%, reviewing discretionary versus nondiscretionary expenditures, and eliminating certain vacant positions. As noted in the transmittal letter, the five-year general, the five-year forecast for the general funds serves as a foundation of the budget planning process. The forecast indicates that expenditures outpace revenues in fiscal year 2526 and progress through each year, each year through fiscal year 2930. Last row on this table indicates the percentage of the deficit over total expenditures for each year. Generally, a deficit under 5% can be fairly easy to cure without impacting service delivery. However, anything over 5% will require community and council input. The citywide proposed revenue is 226.9 million. This chart illustrates all the different revenue categories. And the citywide, citywide proposed expenditures budget is about 211.7 million. The variance from revenues and expenditures is what is being recommended for the capital improvement program budget. Now, Apedrosa will provide a summary of the general funds and the capital improvement program budget. Thank you.
Here's the general funds proposed revenue, including measures E and G, comparing fiscal year 2425 to the prior year. Sales and property tax are the two highest sources and combined for approximately 75% of total revenue. These figures come from estimates provided by the city's consultants, HDL. The other revenues category includes TOT, cannabis, investment earnings, charges for services, and more. Overall, revenues total 174.2 million and are projected to remain relatively flat, increasing by 1.3 million from the prior year or less than 1%. Next, we have the general funds proposed operating expenditures totaling 173 million. Public safety equals 89.4 million or 52% of the total operating budget. Public works and library and community services are approximately 8% each and range from 13.8 to 14.6 million. Operating transfers out are 22.5 million and include funding for various debt obligations, municipal art, internal services, and more. Here's that same operating budget comparing fiscal year 2425 to the prior year. Community development decreased by 1 million due to an allocation for the mobile crisis unit that occurred in the prior year. Finance increased by 550,000 due to an abnormally high vacancy factor in the prior year. Non-departmental increased by 2.8 million due to the reallocation of the animal services contract from police. Therefore, the police budget would have increased by 3.1 million had we not made this adjustment. Overall, the general funds operating budget increased by 1.1 million or less than 1%. The proposed capital improvement program budget is 18.2 million. 7 million is allocated to streets and sidewalks, while 2.6 million address housing and homelessness. As mentioned previously, this only represents new money and does not include the ARPA funding nor the CIP carryover from prior years. Next up is administration.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. I'm on this side of the podium today. Patricia Baraja, City Clerk, am reporting for administration. I'd like to go ahead and get started with highlighting, oops, let's see. The community sponsorship process, which was an initiative driven by the city council. So on April 9th, the city council approved a community budget sponsorship policy in efforts to provide an equitable and transparent process for community grants funded by the general fund. The application period closed on May 10th. With that, we received, the committee received, the committee comprised of admin, finance, and library and community services staff reviewed all 54 applications that were received, totaling 1.7 million in requests. Consideration was given to nonprofit organizations in good standing that were advocating or applying for an activity or an event with a large community and cultural benefit, events that were inclusive of all and youth-led. The list on the PowerPoint slide is the city manager's recommendation totaling $100,000 For the administration department, which is comprised of the city clerks, city manager, and city council support staff, the team continues to support the day-to-day operations and initiatives of the city manager and the city clerk's office, including any support for the city council and public inquiries. With the increase in monolingual participation at city meetings and across all our community engagement platforms, the, the city, city staff will continue to plan and work on a language access policy that can, that we can implement citywide with public engagement. As we gear up for the 2024 election, staff is also diligently working on a new onboarding process for city council members and commissioners and committees as well. And last but not least, for public transparency, for, I'm sorry, and last but not least, we are also working on public transparency and trust as it has been on the forefront of all local governments, all local governments across the state. Our office is committed to ensuring public trust by improving our records dashboard and public access modules. With that, as our interim city manager, Jim Pia, also spoke about earlier, we do have approximately 52 million in ARPA funding, and we are pleased to report that approximately 17 million is left that needs to be encumbered, with all projects needing to be completed by December of 2026. As part of our admin team, we also have our community relations support staff. The community relations team has been focused on building and strengthening relationships with the community and our partners, including the school districts, and piloting new ways to engage and share information with the community. Next year's priorities will include the, including, next year's priorities will be continuing to explore technology to improve outreach and engagement, expanding internship opportunities for youth and college students, and staff training on consistent branding, messaging, and marketing. And with that, I'll pass it on to our city attorney.
Thank you, City Clerk, members of the council, and the public. So while the city attorney's office, office represents only 1%, it's actually less than 1% of your budget, we represent 100% of your city's functions, all of the city's departments, its operations, including the city council. So those efforts include implementing your strategic plan and policy initiatives, all of the department's initiatives and programs, providing them support with those efforts, ensuring compliance with federal, state, and local laws and regulations, defending the city in civil litigation, but also working with your departments to try and prevent litigation from occurring in the first place, as well as managing the city's insurance program and general liability program. And so with that, I will refer this over to Human Resources.
Good afternoon, council members, Mayor. My name is Sylvia Enriquez. Is this it? There we go. Human Resources Manager. During this past fiscal year, Human Resources opened 149 recruitments, all done by staff and not by AI. We generated 3,000 applications. We recently completed a firefighter recruitment that generated 456 applications with 140 interviews, and we will be hiring 17 new firefighters starting on June 10th. With many of the recruitments prior to opening, we do a complete review and update of job descriptions. That processes, that process entails meeting and conferring with the various bargaining units that we have. We hired 100 new employees and promoted 60 current city employees. New hires and promotions require staff resources to implement intakes, orientations, trainings, and processing of documents. We completed 110 separations. Separations can be a result of retirements, resignations, and dismissals. It is important to note that employee separations require just as much work as does a new hire process. We have to undo items such as CalPERS, EDD, DMV, and DOJ. We completed over 1,000 personal transactions. Personal transactions can be completed for every change, such as salary changes due to merit increases, leave of absences, promotions, new hires, dismissals, premium pays, et cetera. This past year, we had to update seven MOUs that generated either salary or benefit changes. With that, I'll go ahead and hand it to Patricia.
Good afternoon, City Council, Mayor. My name is Patricia Peñalos. I'm also an HR manager. In terms of goals for next fiscal year 2425, the Human Resources Department previously started building an online performance evaluation program through NeoGov. We experienced a couple of setbacks, but we hope to roll this out during the first part of next fiscal year. We also plan to reestablish a citywide safety committee. We already reached out to all bargaining unit representatives in this regard. We plan to finalize the workplace violence prevention program as required by SB 553. There is a policy in progress, and training dates have been set with the fire department for June, and the goal is to have all employees trained by July 1st. We also plan to finalize the city's ergonomics policy. This is a more proactive approach to employee wellness and injury prevention, and we also plan to roll this out by the next, by the part of the next fiscal year. We're working with the city's workers' compensation administrator on an alternative light duty program. It's a conversation only, nothing's been implemented, but it would provide alternative light duty assignments with nonprofit organizations if the employee cannot be accommodated within the department. As you all know, the Salinas City Hall was designated as a Blue Zones work site in 2022, so we plan to work with both the police and library and community services department to get their locations designated as Blue Zones work sites as well in the next fiscal year. Our department will continue collaborating with all departments to fill vacancies. We plan to discuss alternative structures to accomplish their respective functions and continue conversations regarding difficult to fill positions. We also plan to expand training opportunities for employees to include more trainings on mental health, stress management, project management, and writing essentials, just to name a few. The last item on our slide is that we will continue reviewing the volunteer process, and that's in terms of reviewing the required training for city volunteers. So with that, I'll hand it off to Library and Community Services.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council and the public, of course. My name is Kristen Lundquist. I'm the Library and Community Services Director. Park maintenance continues to be a priority for us, and with this proposed budget, we'll be looking to add an additional full-time equivalent park maintenance worker. This will bring our full allocation to 16, and will improve our level of service to 15.4 acres per FTE. While this still leaves us shy of the national average of 11 acres per FTE, we continue to make those incremental increases for resources in parks, including areas where we'll need additional attention, like Nativity Creek Park and Montebello Community Park. We also look forward to ongoing playground repairs and new equipment, including universal playgrounds, as well as swings at Santa Rita Park. This is our third, our second year of implementing the prevention and wellness program, and so we look forward to next year as our third year. We will look at shifting the fiscal, to a fiscal year cycle instead of a calendar year cycle, and we expect to release the call for proposals this coming July. As we head into next year, we continue to look forward to expanding the hours of our libraries. We will be expanding programs and services offered at each location and also excited to open the makerspace at El Gabalán Library. We have made great progress on a number of goals from identified for this current year. Most noteworthy, completion of schematic design and awarding of the design-build contract for Hebron Family Center, new playground structures at Nativity and Steinbeck Parks, completed schematic design for Cluster Park, updated the municipal art ordinance, and completed an upgrade of public computers at the libraries across the system. As we look to next year, we're excited about many critical projects beginning construction. That's right, construction, right? That's what we're all excited about. To include the Hebron Family Center, Cluster Park, our universal playgrounds at Northgate and Williams Ranch Parks, and adding exercise equipment to the Cesar Chavez Park. In addition, we look forward to continuing to collaborate with the Big Sur Land Trust as they complete construction on the Car Lake Project, and look forward to hosting a grand opening of Ensign Community Park in the spring of 2025. With that, I'll turn it over to Community Development.
Good afternoon, Lisa Brinton, Community Development Director. Community development accomplishments for '23, '24 include the submission and certification of the sixth cycle housing element, development of a draft Alisal District Identity Master Plan, the awarding of $30,000 in micro grants for marketing and technology, the acquisition of property for permanent supportive housing, and the provision of temporary shelter to approximately 1,200 individuals at the Share Center, Chinatown Navigation Center, and emergency motel program. Permit center volume remained high, with a projection of over 2,300 construction permits approved valued at $94 million. Current planning took in over 500 applications, and code enforcement conducted over 2,900 inspections and processed three receiverships. With a focus on improved customer service, a QR code was added to all permits to allow customers to verify their inspection date, time, and results on the day of inspection. Priorities for '24, '25 include adopting Vision Salinas 2040, our general plan update, the East Area Specific Plan, and the Farashi Business Center Specific Plan. Alisal vibrancy plan implementation will continue with the installation of receptacles, trees, planters, banners, and benches to complete the Alisal greening and beautification project. Permit center activities will focus on processing future growth area entitlements and construction permits in addition to other major commercial, industrial, and residential projects. Anticipated increases in entitlement and permitting work will be at an accelerated rate, which will require more intensive use of staff time. Currently, the department has nine vacancies, which will need to be filled to maintain program implementation, permitting levels of service, and reduce reliance on more expensive outside professional services. Priority initiatives will include launching a new economic development strategic plan, preparation of an updated inclusionary housing ordinance, and addressing the long-term sustainability of grant-funded housing and homeless services programs. Thank you, and I will introduce David Jacobs, Public Works Director.
Good afternoon, Council. David Jacobs, Director of Public Works. Just a quick overview of what is included in Public Works. Really, I have five direct reports. Up here is four. We have an administrative leg on that also. But engineering and transportation includes development engineering, wastewater energy, traffic engineering, and stormwater compliance, all within that particular leg, and they touch all the different divisions within the city, helping them with the development of projects and inspections out on the streets. The environment and, environmental and maintenance services includes street maintenance, urban forestry, facilities, fleet, and sewer services. So as, as general operating budget is $13.7 million, I also have legs in other funds that don't necessarily show up in there. So it's a bigger department than the 13.7 million that is shown there. Some of the major projects that are coming forward within Public Works, the airport improvement projects, that's taxiway projects at the airport. We constantly do signing and striping improvements throughout the city. We do pavement and asphalt, pavement and sidewalk maintenance throughout the city on a, on annual basis. We're doing sewer line repairs. Beronda is out to bid now, so we're hoping to get that under construction fairly soon. And then we recently got $60 million in grant funds for Safe Streets for All for Williams Road, and we're in the process of hiring consultants to actually get that under design. So with that, I will go to Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sam Klemic, your Fire Chief. The major budget changes for the Fire Department really account only for the limited funding in our status quo budget includes adjustments for MOU-related increases, focusing on response prioritization and improvement of our response times where we can with the, the budget dollars allotted. And also allows for us to send two more of our individuals to paramedic training this year. This is in efforts to address where you see our average response times are still trending in the wrong direction, and we want to address that. Next slide. All of our goals in the coming fiscal year revolve around elements and recommendations in our updated community risk assessment and our master plan. We'll continue planning the development of Fire Station 7. We'll work with council and city administration of the to establish funding for that project and finalize the design elements for it. We'll also work with Council Administration to identify funding to address the deferred facilities maintenance throughout the Fire Department and our safety issues that we've identified through our facilities assessment throughout the year. We're also working to decrease our unit hour utilization. In other words, increasing our available unit hours by adding staffing where we can, piloting Seventh Primary Response Unit and fill vacancies in the Fire Prevention Division. As you can see by that chart in our graph, all of our units are past the acceptable standard of 10% unit hour utilization. And for quite some time since the year 2018, at least two of those units are far exceeding that. Those are some of our goals with what we have in our budget this year. What we'll also work to do is expand our Fire Explorers program from 12 to 20 individuals, also adding the 17 new firefighter positions that are split between the $4.7 million Safer Grant and our nine additional personnel, eight additional over-hire personnel that keeps our overtime in check and addresses anticipated vacancies from retirements, long-term absences, and so forth. We'll also see if we can't finish that move for our Fire Administration Division and keep the, keep the fleet maintained and procure a new fire apparatus with those extended five-year lead times for them. We've got to keep everything on the road. So with that, our Police Department is up next. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Public. Police Department, 202324 accomplishments. We had 138,000 calls for service last year. The front desk took over 14,000 customer service incidents. That's the population of some small towns. 8,500 odd police reports were taken last year. Some accomplishments last year. Solve rate for our homicides was above 81%. The national average is 48 to 52%. Quite an accomplishment. 84.7% of our high-priority calls had an officer on scene within three minutes. Those are calls that were threats to life, high-risk calls. And what was very impressive last year, our Investigations Bureau received the Safety and Peace Award from the Community Alliance for Safety and Peace from CASP, recognizing the extraordinary solve rate for our homicides and the fantastic work that the detectives and officers and professional staff at the Police Department accomplished last year. Our plan is to maintain that level of service to the community. Goals for the coming year, of course, employee retention and support, recruitment of sworn officers, and officer wellness. We have to take care of the team and the professional staff that we have and ensure that we have a healthy work environment. More important than, more important, of course, is maintaining critical services within the city while dealing with our reduced staffing levels, the challenges that presents. And of course, expanding our youth outreach programs and our community engagement. That's critical for our Police Department moving forward. I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
So I just want you to know, I'm not particularly thrilled because the City Manager and I had a personal bet. He said he could get it done in 30 minutes, and you all got it done in 28. So I'm impressed, but also I think I owe the City Manager a Dr. Pepper. So, so with that, thank you very much for the very succinct presentation, 50, 52 slides. And we will start with Councilmember. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead. City Manager would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see, indulge me for a brief moment here. I work with a staff, directors on down, second to none, in my humble opinion. And I am proud of each and every one of them. We enjoy working with all of you. We are not dysfunctional. We roll up our sleeves. I disagree with them. I agree with them. I disagree with some of you. I agree with some of you on various issues. I commend the Finance Department. They've been challenged with staffing. It's been Selena and Abe and Yessenia. It's just been a wonderful thing. I know Kristin or someone, Anna, mentioned the bilingual community meeting. This budget process, we'll wait for some of the questions up here. Mayor, I would submit to you, and the Council has been, has been wonderful. And I think we, for a city our size and the staffing level we have, we meet many challenges. And by the way, we're government. I know it takes time to get to certain things. I wish sometimes we were private sector. I don't have a magic wand. That's all.
Do your comments go into the 30-minute presentation? That's what I want to know.
No, I want my Dr. Pepper.
All right. Okay, thank you. And I'll just take a quick moment to acknowledge and ask for a round of applause for our interim City Manager, Jim Pia, who has shepherded us through the entire, the entire budget process. He was the acting, and he was the acting Finance Director, and then we upgraded him to the acting City Manager. And so I think through that, with all of staff's help, he has led the city well. So thank you for that. We'll start to my right for Councilmember questions. Councilmember Osornio.
Yes, thank you. One of the first questions is, I just had some questions on language access to some of the, and I believe this was at Administration Department, but language access and onboarding and support. If, if I could just get a little bit of elaboration on those two items, those are some of the things that I, I was hoping to see with this next fiscal year, and just kind of want to get a little bit more information.
So Councilmembers, you may recall, I believe last year or the year before, there was a request from Council to initiate and begin translation of the City Council agendas. We have done that for City Council. We plan on continuing that process across all Commissions and Boards, not just with the agendas, but any material. We also were able to translate the budget last fiscal year, and we plan to do that for this fiscal year already. So there are a number of components that will go into that language access policy. We've had translation at our Council meetings for a number of years now, and the requests continue to come in for all the other Commissions and Boards as well. So we will be coming back to the Council with a draft policy and recommendations on that front as well. And then your second part to that question was with regard to.
It was, so first of all, thank you so much for elaborating on the language access. That's, that is huge. And thank you again for working on that and making sure that the budget was translated in Spanish. The second question to that is going to be the onboarding and support. I'm assuming when it comes to any committees or commissions. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Correct. So one of the things that we've noticed we lack in terms of the onboarding process for both the Councilmembers and the Commissioners and Committee members that serve is the fact that we don't have any formal training. We do provide Brown Act training and on occasion, ethics training, but we have never really mentored our Commissioners or even our Councilmembers and what their roles and responsibilities are for serving the community and serving on those Commissions and Boards. Our Assistant City Clerk Alexis Mejia has been researching what other cities have done, and we plan to model some of that content and apply it also for here in the city of Salinas. Hopefully, we'll help with retention of our Commissioners and Committee members, and we'll also garner some additional interest in serving the community and the city of Salinas.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. I'm glad to see that that's in the budget just because even when I first started, I'd never served on any committees or commissions. So some type of formal training of kind of even like a job description outline. Thank you guys so much for the work on that. The, the next question is going to be, it's going to be for the Cesar Chavez Park. I know that that, that's an item that's inside of the budget. I know currently, I forget if the last time we said that it would be completed was sometime last year. I don't know if it was in September or October, but really trying to figure out when that, when that could be open and kind of what the process is currently right now.
Sure, we have a number of different projects going on at Cesar Chavez. You may recall, we had a Prop 68 per capita grant to do a trail improvement project. The trail is, is complete pending the exercise equipment. So we're currently working with the manufacturers to ID the best equipment, exercise equipment to fit in those pads. The other major project there is the soccer, artificial turf soccer field. And David, I may ask for some support if I don't get all of the project done, but, or completed in the question. But that, the, the soccer field itself is done. We are waiting for the plant establishment period to be completed. That started and began on April 9th, and will go until August. Where, you may recall, we've had a major irrigation project there that we've been working to get the irrigation fixed. We do have some complications, given some of the construction, but we're working through those now. So I would hope in end of August, early September, we could be looking at a huge celebration for that location.
Okay, and, and I just wanted to ask, just for the record, because I believe this project started in August of September of last year. Is that, is that right?
It sounds about right. Yeah.
Yeah. So, and I know that right now there's a portion of the, of the park that is currently fenced off and closed. So I just really want to, to make sure that that's stated on the record that we're, I, I would, I would hope that we would try to not have the park closed for an entire year, especially in a neighborhood that can definitely utilize the full potential of the park. So I just really wanted just that to be on the record. I don't have any other questions about the park. Thank you. And then I, I had some questions just in the HR Department as it relates to the, the new hires. I know that there was a positive number of new hires being hired at 100 folks that, that were hired. But then I know that the separations were 110. So does that, are we at a negative 10 then for the, the hires? And then obviously, the, the folks that have already separated?
Not necessarily. That number fluctuates because we hire and we, you know, people leave on a bi-weekly basis, weekly basis. So it's a fluid number. So we captured that about two weeks ago. So not necessarily in the negative.
Okay. And then the other follow-up question to that would be, what are the current, do we currently staff with any type of other staffing agencies or contractors or consultants so that they can take, do the onboarding, the HR, and then we just get like a, an employee ready to start? Do we currently have that type of model here at the city?
No, we don't. We do contract with agencies to help us with recruitments and even with difficult-to-fill recruitments or executive recruitments. Even with those, we do review the final batch of applicants. So we, we do a second review of that. We don't, we do our own onboarding, our own intake. Everything is done in-house.
Has there ever been any conversations about doing it outside and sourcing it outside and then bringing it in-house?
Not that I'm aware of. No.
Okay, no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the, the last thing that I had of question is just as it relates to our community development. I know that some of the, I think it was like Wens were Vallarta and some of the other things that have been coming to Salinas. My question is, is, is there any number of employees that we are going to be hiring? I think, I think there was in a slide, Lisa, that there was nine vacancies in a certain department?
Correct. In the Community Development Department, again, as HR referenced, it is fluid. We hire and we separate. So currently, we stand at nine individuals throughout the whole department. Two of those are in the Permit Center Plans Examiners. So at this point in time, we are relying very heavily on outside consulting services to process the volume of building permit review.
Oh, good. Okay. And that was ultimately going to be the question. I, lately, I have been in communications with folks that are pooling permits. One of them for a roof repair, one of them for a business opening at the Northridge Mall. And I, I am still getting some phone calls. Not too sure if the Vallarta signage issue has been kind of addressed. But I know that with having a couple of Permit Center employees really seeing if we can kind of get those permits out the door.
Definitely. And I'm very pleased to, to share that we just hired two full-time Permit clerks that started as part-time clerks, so had an opportunity for full-time employment. So we're also working to expand our customer service at the counter. And David Gonzalez, our Assistant Director, is actively working with staff to track applications and identify when they're getting stuck so that we can unstick them.
Thank you so much, Lisa. I, I don't have any other questions, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barrera, questions?
Well, I want to thank Mr. Pia and the staff for this. You know, this is the first time I really try to read everything, but difficult. I mean, I commend you for professionalism. But as a Councilmember, as an elected public servant, and I also have a responsibility. So I'm going to ask a series of questions. So if you think I'm redundant, maybe I am, but I need to understand so I can face the music out there. Thank you. Mr. Pia, in your letter to the City Council on the forecast, you mentioned sales tax, property tax, but where it says other revenue, is that restricted? Is some of that, is that restricted revenue? Where it says other revenue?
I have a better answer. Selena.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Barrera. So no, it's not, it's not restricted. Some of it is, but most is not.
So, so that other revenue, what specifically, what, can you just give us, what, what is it?
Of course, it's UUT, TOT, transient occupancy, transient occupancy tax, cannabis tax.
Thank you. And maybe this question is for you or Mr. Pia. But in the same report, it says, prepare for addressing, this is during the fiscal outlook. Are we prepared for addressing future deficits? And of course, even though we don't, we're not in control of the economy, do we have a plan here in case the economy shifts either way, where we don't scramble to make decisions? But do we have a plan?
Thank you for the question.
And we do have a plan. And thank you to the good work of Finance and the good work of you Councilmembers, where we took last year your reserves up to 12%. That's the money you use when there will be a downturn, and there will be a downturn. And so that's the importance of reserves. And the reserves went up slightly this year, about 600,000, if I remember, because we want to recognize that it's a big problem all throughout California. Balancing your budget by sales tax is very volatile, and it's an issue. And so we're ready for that.
Yes. And Mr. Pia, with that said, I heard the word trust. A lot of times, people don't trust us. Transparency, some people feel that we're not transparent, but I, I believe we are. But you have 500-plus employees, I believe, Mr. Pia. Are there conversations, you know, to, as you build morale, Are there conversations, you know, to, as you build morale, do your department directors just talk to employees, you know, as, as times are shifting, whether it's funding? You know, it's, it's kind of sad, me as an employee, for example, at Public Works, and then all of a sudden, I get a pink slip. Hey, guess what, Tony? You're no longer the fork lift driver. I mean, do we talk to employees? Build a team, that's what I'm talking about, as we look to this issue, economic forecast.
So we have over 600 employees, not over 500. About 649-ish, or the vacancies, if they were all hired.
Yes.
So, but thank you for the question. The, your department directors do have regular meetings with staff, mid-level staff, who then deal, I think morale is always an issue. We want to keep employees. We are a city of 161-plus thousand people, and we have a staff that is really every-day challenged based on the numbers of staff, in terms of other communities who have larger numbers. But I think our team does a good job communicating with their departments.
Good. Thank you. Ms. Andrews, in your pie chart, there's one that says non-departmental, 11 million plus. Can you just share a little bit, what is that, non-departmental? It's in the letter from Mr. Pia.
Yes, I think that was on page 15.
Yes.
So that would be animal services, emergency dispatch, 911.
Okay. Thank you.
Debt, also.
Yes, thank you. I have a question, again, Mr. Pia, in your letter. There's a, on Measure G, it talks about no parking, sweeping signage program. What is that? I mean, is that happening or is that in 2029? Oh, Mr. Jacobs.
Yes. Yes, that is happening in the background. We are trying to establish the routes that work best for the street sweepers. And we've gone through a couple iterations of routes where, where the, they're driving more than they are sweeping. So we're trying to, to figure out how best to get them sweeping more than they are driving so that we can get the routes right and put the signs up so that we're doing a efficient job of sweeping.
Yes. And Mr. Jacobs, why can't we see this program materialize? Where you see the street sweeper actually doing the job?
We're shooting for fall time of this year, to actually have the signs in the ground and actually have a pilot program where, where we have the, and I know we've been saying that for, for a couple of years now. But we're getting very close now because we are working on the routes and, and hopefully testing those in June. And then from there, we would, once they, we solidify the routes, we'll put up the signs and get the no parking going.
Yes, you're getting a Dr. Pepper, Mr. Jacobs. Thank you. Thank you, sir. And in your conclusion, Mr. Pia, it says the city's primary revenue sources will need to continue to strengthen to ensure that the city's service levels are up to par. What is in our, because we're not in charge of the economy, but what's in our power that we're being able to say, hey, we're actually doing a better job than last year to strengthen these services that we're providing?
So, right now, you are hitting on a question that what is, how is this budget different than past budgets? And admittedly, this budget, the directors have, have kept the numbers similar to last year. Are we offering more services? No. But the initial part of your question talked about the increases year over year. What can you do? Well, everything you do has an effect on this budget in terms of MOUs and employee contracts and, but some things, you don't have any control over. You don't have any control over the pension funds. You have limited control over healthcare costs. You have limited control over workers' compensation costs. But we need to be, you do have control over, do you spend the reserve or do you prudently save a reserve? Those are the things that I would encourage you to hang on to.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. On human resources, in your chart, you mentioned personnel transactions, 1,000-plus. Can you, can you share a little bit, what exactly does that mean?
Sure. So whenever we have to make a change for anything that impacts salary, bilingual pay, a personal transaction has to occur. So that includes if someone gets a merit increase, if someone is being released, retires, hired, promoted, anything that's gonna impact an employee's status, we have to do a personal action or transaction.
That's a lot of work.
And that involves being routed, being signed by the director, finance, HR. So it is a process.
Yeah. It's a huge process. So thank you. And you know what? With that same idea there, when Tony Barrera applies for janitor at City Hall, how long does it take? Because I hear that sometimes it takes a very long time to hire somebody. So I come in, I apply. How, how long is the process?
It really depends on the recruitment and what's involved in that recruitment. So for example, the fire department, we opened a recruitment in the fall. Well, we're just now gonna start our staff in June. So it just, it just depends on the steps, the background process, pre-implement physical. So there are a lot of factors that go into place for each recruitment. So ideally, we'd like to recruit someone within three months, you know, from start to finish. And I, I think we pride ourselves in how fast and effective we are, but we do want to make sure that we complete thorough background process on every applicant that we receive.
Yes. And with that said as well, sometimes there's a specific, you need somebody that's really trained in this. I know I've heard Ms. Brenton say, sometimes it's difficult to hire because there's not enough experience. When you see somebody that, hey, this person can do the job, I mean, do we do a little bit of hurry up or no? Because, because let me tell you, what goes on to another city? I mean, does that happen?
We do, we do try to continue the communication. So we reach out, it depends on the recruitment, once again. Reach out to applicants, encourage them to, you know, continue waiting and, until the recruitment is done. We cannot move forward unless the recruitment is open and closed. If it's a continuous recruitment, that calls for a different process. But each recruitment is a specific, has specific guidelines and processes.
Yes. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, I don't know who, with the volunteer process review, I know here in Salinas, there's a lot of people, we have a lot of people that love their town. They want to be volunteers. But sometimes I hear, hey, I wanted to be a volunteer, but the process is so long, I got bummed out, discouraged or whatever. What happens here? If I want to volunteer, what's, what's the process?
So I can't speak to the entire volunteer process, but the part that Human Resources is working on is the training. So because, if, if a volunteer is working with youth, they're required to take certain training. So there's anti-harassment training that they'll have to take. So that's the one that we'll be monitoring.
In terms of the process, if it's an ongoing volunteer position, there is an application process, and then we do require those volunteers to go through an orientation. And then we work to place them with whatever particular department they're interested in. A lot of our volunteers, though, are one-day support for a variety of more Salinas cleanups and other park and event programs. And those are done, you know, the day of. We do have electronic registration for our volunteer program to hope, in the hopes of speeding up the process.
And Ms. Lundquist, I'm glad you're there at the podium. What, let's just suppose there's an individual or a group that's interested in adopting a park. What do they, do we have that?
We do have an adopt a park program.
And how does that work?
Again, there is a, an application process. We have staff that works directly with them around what their project or particular location is. We make sure they have proper liability waivers, and then we put them to work.
Yeah. On the maintenance side, how do you think we're doing on Montevideo Park?
So we, we are working to be on top of all of the issues and concerns there. I can tell you that part of this proposed budget doesn't include, does include additional resources to support that neighborhood and that park because of the assessment district funds. So we're looking to be as efficient and effective. There's been a number of recent requests to include lighting behind the restrooms that have been installed. They also have asked for partition expansions in the restroom so that as you walk by, you don't see an individual at a urinal. So we're working through all of those things. We've done some great reseating projects in the area as well to get that turf up and going.
And Ms. Lundquist, what's the status on the Cesar Chavez sign?
So we have been in-
Excuse me, the Cesar Chavez library sign.
Yeah, so we've been in communication with Signis Signs and we're waiting for their, them to provide us with some feedback and a potential bid cost estimate.
Great. Thank you. Community development, Barrera comes in, he wants to build a house. I got all my plans. You know, sometimes we do hear of people having issues at the permit center, and we're trying to figure out how to work together. But usually, how long does a, a permit take? Because that's, that's money for the city. So, so somebody comes in, they want to build something. What's usually the, the time it takes for a person to get their, their permit?
So it can vary, depending on the project and how many rounds of review. So if the application is complete, first round of review for a building permit, not needing any other planning entitlements, is supposed to be 15 days to the first review, and then it drops down 10 days, then five days. But it's listed on our website, the number of days of review. Now, as I mentioned, our two vacancies in the permit center are our key plans examiner positions. The ones that review the plans, the applications as they come in. So right now, we're having to send those plans outside, which adds to the timeframe.
Yeah.
Because the consultants themselves are, are behind. But we're doing our best to, to track it and have efficiencies in coordination and workflow between all the different components and functions in the permit center.
Yeah. And Ms. Brenton, I know the council has heard you because it's just a specified job here. Are you seeing people applying for these positions or is it difficult to get people to apply?
So we have struggled with these two positions, a senior plan check engineer and a plan check engineer. So we have been working very closely with Human Resources to look at the job description itself. We're also looking at salary schedule and, and trying to figure out why we aren't getting the qualified candidates that we are seeking. Our assistant director, David Gonzalez, participated in a similar recruitment for an engineering-type position for the city of Hollister yesterday. And from his, his perspective, it, it was primarily salary. If you looked at the description, what we were asking for, our benefits, it comes down to a salary differential. That it could be, you know, we're not saying it's definitely, but that is, we're scratching our heads too, trying to figure out why we're not getting a response to our recruitment.
Yes, yes. Thank you. And one last question, Mr. Pia. You know how sometimes as we're recruiting police officers, we provide some kind of bonuses? For these specific critical positions, do we ever look at bonuses? I mean, hey, because these are critical positions, and you know what? It's, it's money that's being lost by the city. Are we, are we in those discussions?
So to answer your question, Mr. Barrera, yes, we have done that for other positions. We've done it for our engineers. We offered an incentive of $20,000. It, it worked. We did get some candidates in, but that one is unique in that we allow our senior civil engineers to obtain their professional engineer license as, within the first year, I believe it is. And if they don't obtain it, then they're released. So we are looking at job descriptions. We're looking at experience required. We're looking at the education that we require. But when they're so technical like that, there's only so much that we can give. If, if it's required, if it's a certification that they need, then we really can't change that. But we do look at experience requirements, and we can certainly revisit incentives for other positions that are difficult to fill, such as the plan checkers.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And council, just as a time check, we're halfway through our study session, and I do want to make sure that we have the opportunity to hear from the public as well. So thank you for your patience with that, and we'll go on to Councilmember Gonzalez for questions.
Just a few questions. When it comes to the differentials, can we put up the slide? Slide 19, general funds, proposed expenditures. There was a difference, so we're looking at the comparison from this year to next year. And I just wanted to get clarification on what I see as the biggest increase for non-departmental, 2.7 million. Can I get just some clarification as to why that is such a big jump? I see the only other one that comes close is, you know, operating transfers out. But just where does that come from? What does that go into?
We moved the animal services contract from police to non-departmental, and that was about 2.7 million.
Okay. And then for community development, they're looking at about 1 million?
Yeah. Last year, we had a one-time allocation for the mobile crisis unit, which was a million.
Got you. Okay. Perfect. And then some questions when it comes to parks now, Ms. Lundquist. You know, we've talked about Nativity Creek Park quite a bit. In particular, we've had issues with, because it is such a large space, the largest park in Salinas, maintenance and oversight. You know, Kristen, we talked about issues when it came to people stealing the copper from some of the lights and having to get that replaced every so often. Issues with illegal dumping, people leaving even, you know, mattresses, couches. When you talk about increased maintenance, staffing and even security, what does that look like to you for Nativity Creek Park?
So being that it is the largest, or one of the largest, if not the largest, park, my intention is to allocate additional staffing resources to that location, made in part by this proposed increase of a new full-time equivalent position to allow that to expand. We're still working through a number of projects. You, you mentioned the lighting. You mentioned previously, we're doing some research around, is there a way to bring some additional lighting to the tunnel? There's a restroom project that's underway that we're trying to finalize and get completed. So there are a number of other efforts, but what I was speaking to specifically had to do with staffing.
Got it. Okay. And then, similar to that, when we talk about just maintenance and oversight more than anything, I know that we did the pilot program over at Cluster Park for security. You know, there was a few incidents last year at Nativity Creek Park. There was the, the young person that was stabbed at the park late hours. Have we looked into security, into what that could be like? But maybe that comes from increased lighting, but just safety, because folks are still out there at night.
So we are continuing to evaluate security needs throughout the system. It is very expensive, and so that's been probably the largest hindrance. But we, we will continue to look at that, and when we have significant safety issues, we will have those conversations.
Okay. Thank you, Kristen. And then just a few questions for David Jacobs, specific to CIP Project 9128, the Williams Road streetscape and safety improvements. I just wanted some clarification around, I know there's gonna be, where was it here? Three roundabouts at East Alisal, East Market, and Freedom, and then lane reduction. Is that the reduction of one entire lane for all of Williams, or what does that look like?
Yeah, that's part of the Safe Streets For All grant that we recently received from the Fed, federal government. It was a $16 million grant, and that was part of putting in those roundabouts on Williams Road.
And so will we lose one lane both ways for all of, just I wanted to get clarification around lane, will include lane reduction?
Yeah, most likely it would be, it would be similar to what we did on Alisal, where we went from four lanes to two lanes, one lane in each direction with roundabouts and bike lanes on, on the street.
And have we accounted for impacts to traffic congestion? Because that, I mean, Williams, as it is right now, it's, there's always traffic. It's got several schools along it, businesses. Has, are we looking into proactive measures, preventative measures? Will the roundabouts themselves help with that congestion? What do you foresee as we go ahead with that project?
I would assume it would, mainly because roundabouts help the traffic flow. Traffic lights obviously stop traffic, where roundabouts will actually have a continuous flow through them. So the hope is that it does improve traffic flow.
Okay. And then for CIP Project 9267, streetlight installation, I'm happy to see that there's gonna be lighting over on Kern, Market, Pearl, and Alisal. What is the estimated timeline on this?
She's not here. Sorry.
Get a lifeline.
I don't, I don't know. I can, I can give you that, I can get that information to you. It's, this lighting we've been, we've been dealing with for the last couple of years, trying to figure out how, how to put them in and get studies to actually do the best location for the lights. And I don't, off the top of my head, don't know the status, but I can definitely get that for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. And that, that is all the questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval, questions?
My first question is for Chief Murray. I would find out how are our recruiting efforts going with the, and are we seeing results from the increase in the hiring incentives that council approved? And is that getting carried over in the budget for this next year?
Yeah, we're certainly seeing a great deal more interest here in the last few months. The launch of our recruitment website certainly helped. The hiring incentives definitely sparked interest. We're getting a lot of what we call interest cards from people in the community, people contacting us, wanting more information. Excuse me. Not just for our swarm positions, but for our professional staff positions, which are very important as well. I think they're often overlooked, and I'm very grateful to the council for allowing us to have that incentive to bring those professional staff positions to us. So yes, we're seeing an increase in interest. The hiring process for law enforcement is arduous, but needs to be that way, but we're making good traction.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Now, my next question is for Public Works. Do we have plans to address- Do we have plans to address... I know there's a deficit happening with our parking garage, and as we look to new revenues or how to stop some revenue from leaking, do we have any plans to address the deficit there?
So, your question is regarding the parking garages that we have in downtown areas. There is a current plan to try to get cameras installed. We're working through the process to get a consultant onboard to design that and bid the project so that we can install new cameras in both garages.
Thank you. And that CIP item is in this budget, correct?
It's in last year's budget.
Okay, but it's going to be done this year?
So, you wouldn't see it in this year, no, because the money has already been allocated to it.
But the plan is to move forward on that this year?
Correct.
All right. And then potholes. It's obviously an issue across our city. Do we have any plans or money budgeted to take a different approach to potholes as opposed to temporary and more of a hot mix? I know we recently approved a council policy, but do we have a specific money?
We do have money in this budget to address potholes as we're doing now. We do have a machine. We do have hot patch, pothole repair machine, and we also have cold patch. We try to use both of them. When it's cold outside, we can't use the hot patch, so we do the cold patch. And it's also a matter of trying to get as many fixed as possible at one time. If we go out there and do them, or you square it off and clean them out and put it in, it's a longer process. You're not going to get as many potholes done in a day that you normally do with the way we currently do. So, there's a give and take when you start talking about how we address the potholes. We also need to do more crack filling throughout the city to help prevent those potholes. So, as we move through this year's budget and get the ARPA money spent, we're going to move toward, more toward crack filling than pothole fixing.
Thank you. All right. My next question is for community development. I know we talked about code enforcement officer two position that was going to be funded, or there was talks about that, especially for the nights and weekends when we adopted our food truck program. Is that currently funded in this upcoming budget, or is that position currently filled?
So, with... It was at the May 7 meeting. The city council approved workforce allocation. So, we took our vacant code officer one and shifted it to a code officer two. So, now the one vacant code officer position is a code officer two, and we are looking to create code enforcement teams. So, right now, what we are looking at doing is, in this budget, is funding about $250,000 to contract out services while we're building up our team internally. So, we are going to be meeting with county environmental health, as well as working with our Salinas Police Department to come up with an actual task force, a very strategic approach to the education citation, what is the escalation of process to address the nonpermitted vendor situation.
And will that be also covering nights and weekends?
Correct. So, the contract services to start will be really focusing on that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 4:00 to 1:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday, and then slightly earlier hours on Sunday, morning, afternoon, evening.
I remember we recently talked about a possible tiny home project or sanctioned encampment. Is there money in the budget allocated for one of those possible projects, either the development or early stages?
So, in terms of housing production, we have lots of pots of money. We need shovel-ready projects. So, we have our local housing trust fund. We also have our, what do you call it, from our pro-housing implementation plan, as well as other funding sources through our affordable housing fund. So, we do have funding available, and our struggle right now is to identify shovel-ready projects that meet the criteria of that funding source.
I understand. Thank you. Those are all my questions. And I have just one question for our perks. I know we had talked in the past about the Laurel... Well, first, my question is about the restrooms in Laurelwood Park. I know we talked about partitions a little earlier, about the Montebello, but that's also a big issue at that park. I know that there's been concerns from parents about people walking by and being able to see as well. Do we have plans to upgrade those as well?
We actually already did. We did that prior to the baseball season. We added doors on all of the stalls for the restroom. So, there's a barrier there as opposed to just an open stall.
Oh, great. Fantastic. And have we also started the... I know you were looking at some possible upgrades to that Little League field. Have we started those as well, or is that something in the upcoming year?
So, those will be things we evaluate through the upcoming year. We did do some fence repairs. We also had the building fumigated. You may recall, there were some termite concerns. So, we're making some incremental process improvements there.
Okay, great. Those are all my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Rocha, questions?
Thank you. Mayor, would you like for me to give questions and comments now, or what do you... How do you want to proceed?
You can go ahead and do questions now. We'll go out to the public, and then we'll come back for a final comment.
Understood. Thank you. My question is, I'm not sure if this is for Selena or for Kristen, but it'd probably be good if both of you were here. So, it mentions in the transmittal letter that we have some identified carryover items, and it says that appropriations and offsetting funding sources are programmed as carryovers and will be recognized in the city's ACFR as expenditures only after they are expended, which then identifies prevention wellness grant at $300,000, a mobile crisis unit at $500,000, and the vehicle replacement fund at 3.9 million. So, my question is, were those identified outside of the fiscal year, or how are they not identified within the operational budget?
So, you may heard me during my presentation talk about shifting the grant cycle for prevention and wellness to fiscal year. For the last two years, it has been calendar year, which requires us to carry over the purchase orders for those programs into the next fiscal year. So, we're aligning with finance to make sure that those programs are on a fiscal year basis.
And does that mean that the grant is renewed for the next?
It is. We are anticipating the same level of funding at 300,000.
Underst... Thank you. Understood. And then my guess is for the mobile crisis unit, we allocated 1 million, we spent 500,000, and then the 500,000 is for the next fiscal year?
That is correct.
Okay. And then what does it mean for the vehicle replacement fund at 3.9 million?
So, what this is saying is that we are... We have that currently in that fund, and we are carrying it over.
Understood. And then my next question is, under the strategies on how to address the budget balancing strategies, the third strategy is reducing the allocations to other funds such as fleet, maintenance, reserve, and funds that generally run on a deficit year over year due to insufficient revenues coming in for those programs. Can you explain that a little bit more to me? Does that mean you're going to be eliminating funding for programs that run at a deficit every year? I'm unclear as to what that means.
That is correct, Councilmember Rocha. So, each year, we do have certain funds that run negative, and the general fund will have to, at the end of the year, do transfers into those negative funds. And a lot of times, we've identified those at the beginning of the budget process, and so we anticipate that we're going to have to fund those funds with the general funds. And in this case, we didn't allocate as much as we would have liked to in order to put them out of the deficit.
Okay. So, does that mean we're just not going to allocate what the run over would be?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And as I was reading this transmittal letter, it really identified what are the key driving factors for the financial challenges we're going to be facing. There are several that are out of our control, mainly, they're mostly out of our control. But I did notice that nearly 75% of our city budget is based on sales tax and property tax. Those two sources of revenue are... Property tax is increasing 5.5, and sales tax is increasing 1.1. Where I'm seeing a decrease in our revenue is in the franchise fees and business license tax, with the franchise fee seeing a 7.2 decrease and business license tax seeing a 5.2 decrease. What are strategies to address that revenue shortfall for those two categories?
Can you... I'm sorry, Councilmember Rocha, can you remind me what page we're on here?
It's on... This is embarrassing. I do not know how to read Roman numerals. So, I'll just say it's VII.
I'm sorry, that was VII.
There you go.
Thank you. So, these... A lot of the sales tax and the property tax, the forecasts do come from a consultant, HDL, so we use their projections.
Okay. And is there anything we could do on our end to, like, for example, the business license tax? Is that just a matter of people not opening new businesses in our city and the franchise fees? Like, is there anything we could do to turn the course of what is projected for those two?
Unfortunately, no. As the population grows, the franchise fees will grow as more businesses come into Salinas. Then we will collect additional business license tax. We are working to get everybody registered with their business licenses. So, I imagine in the next year or so, we would... We will be bringing in more revenue.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, the city went from, when I was first elected, to having an 8% reserve. Now, we're at 12% economic contingency reserve. Is there any money in this budget to potentially increase that reserve even more this fiscal year?
So, the way we built the budget is we didn't... We are doing our best to not touch the fund balances at the moment because we were seeing deficits in future years. So, for the time being, I think we're in a good place. However, as resources become available, the GFOA recommended for any agency is two months of expenditures, and so that brings us to 17%. So, at some point, if there are resources, we should consider increasing that reserve.
And those resources aren't currently existing within this budget?
Not currently.
Okay. Thank you. I have a few more questions. These are for community development, though. Thank you, Selena. I appreciate your answers.
Thank you.
I noticed in the workforce allocation for your department...
Yes.
These are easier to read because this is page 99, so... I did notice that there are several increases to your budget, which I'm excited about, but I'm not sure where the funding is coming for those positions, but I certainly support them. The Salinas Outreach and Response Program, our SORT program, is going to go from 1 authorized in fiscal year '23, '24 to 6.4 authorized in this upcoming year. Is that because we're going to absorb that in our general fund?
No, it's coming from the Encampment Resolution Fund grant that we received this past year.
And I do see we're also going to have an increase of 4.6 positions in the emergency motel program. How are we funding that?
That is also through the Encampment Resolution Fund.
Great. And then I also see that we're going to see an increase, which I'm very supportive of, to the downtown streets team. It's going to go from last fiscal year being at 577,000 to this year being at 590,000. Can you speak to that?
It's just cost of living increase. It's just year over year. It's not tied to anything specific.
Okay. But thank you for bringing that forward, and I support that expenditure. I have a question for... That's all for you.
Okay.
I have a question for Public Works. There's going to be an increase of $1 million for the Bronder Road project. Which phase of that project is the $1 million going to go to, and what's the purpose of that money?
That's still the current Phase 1.
Okay.
We need to put as much money away as we can. Obviously, our... The engineer's estimate is more than what we have in the budget now, what we are at to bid. So, hopefully, the bids come in really good and below our estimates, and then we can possibly shift that to Phase 2 and start design work on Phase 2.
It is just to be safe to ensure that we have the money to start Phase 1.
Yes.
Okay. And then I had another question with the Gablin silt removal. It's been existing CIP. My question is, are we doing silt removal every year at Gablin Creek?
We aren't because it requires a permit from the... From environmental permits to get in there, stream bed alteration permit. It goes through several different agencies. We're in the process of getting that done, very close to actually getting those permits in place so that we can actually go in there and do some maintenance work.
Okay. That'd be really important. And then my... Thank you. That's all for you. And then my other questions for the interim city manager. We have several millions of dollars that we have yet to encumber for the American Rescue Plan. What is our plan to encumber those funds, and when is the deadline?
So, thank you for the reminder, because all of our staff knows this, that we have... We started at 51.5 million. We need to spend about 28 million. We've spent 22 million. But of the 28 or 29, 17 million is unencumbered, and we need to encumber that money by the end of this year. But our folks in the director chairs and their managers know that we are going to probably revisit so we can reallocate monies that we're having problems with. One of the ones David just mentioned to you, the silt removal, some of that was in ARPA, and because of the licensing, we may have to shift that because some of the directors have an easier time, just based on program, spending the money. And so, we will look at that probably in August, but we're well aware that we need to encumber every penny by the end of this year and spend by the end of '26.
Thank you. And my last question to you is, there were seven positions identified that were vacant that are going to be eliminated. Is there any reason we're not going to just freeze the positions as opposed to eliminating them entirely?
You've hit my funny bone. Freezing means elimination just in a different way, and I know we've had this from the dais up here, whether we're freezing different positions. We will remember those positions. These folks won't let me forget those positions, some of those positions. And I'll just give you one sample, and working with John Murray, chief of police, the multiple service officers, there was a couple of them. We were thinking of having police who make arrests then hand off the person, and we've just had a difficult time in terms of HR, in terms of process, filling those two. Those were two of the seven. But we will remember these positions, and whether it's frozen, eliminated, we certainly know what those are.
Were the bargain units consulted when those positions are going to be identified as being eliminated?
Maureen is not here, but we did some of that over time when, during the process of trying to get positions filled. Whether or not they were told two weeks ago that we were pulling them, I can't speak to. But during the time we were doing that development of the position, in fact, that was one of them that took many months working with the bargaining. But I don't know the answer to that, but I will look into that.
Okay. Are we too late in the budget at this point to potentially have the discussion about freezing them instead of eliminating them? I only ask that because I think it's much harder to identify a position like that to be included in the budget once it's been eliminated, as opposed to removing it from being frozen when it's an existing identified position within the budget.
So, it's a good question. I'm going to... Because Chief Sam walks me through this all the time. He's hiring through, and Stefania, through the safer grant, a number of firefighters, for example, that this city will have to pick up in less than three years, once those positions are out of federal and into our laps as we look to Station 7. Those are the kind of positions that we need to be thinking about for the future. Could we consider, could we relabel these, assuming they're not funded? And we all have an agreement that they're not funded. Could we go back to vacant? You will be getting a budget, a recommended budget on June 11, and that could be one of the comments that you can make, you made here tonight, and we'll give it some thought.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
I'm going to piggyback, actually, on some of that because I know Chief Frasay really fought when, I think there were... I could be wrong on the number, but in 2020, 2021, there were 14 police officer positions that had been frozen for several years that were eliminated. that were eliminated. They were taken off the books entirely. And I think that's a very worthy question to ask. And I, my first question, actually, is for Chief Murray. So I noticed in field operations, which is obviously officers on patrol, fiscal year authorized 2021, 2022 is 138. This past year is 133, and we're down to 128 for this upcoming year. Noticing that the budget has increased for field operations. I think we've gone from $32 million to $37 million. So 10 less officers with an increase in, in the proposed budget for salaries and benefits. A difference of about $5 million. I'm just wondering if you can speak to that.
Personnel costs are the largest portion of our budget. With the new contracts, it increases personnel costs, so it tends to inflate that number. It can give our overall budget a perception that it's growing, when in fact, our operations portion of the budget is not.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Kind of. I mean, can you operate a department with 128 officers? We had 187 when I started in 2011.
You know, in law enforcement right now, we're all in the business of management of personnel, finances, and equipment, and that's the management of scarcity. The way we deal with that is, we deal with scarcity by diversity of thought, and looking for new innovative ways to address the challenges we face. And one of those was the multipurpose officers that the city manager was just discussing. It's a new approach to deal with one of the challenges. I'm very happy that he mentioned it, because it's on the official record that we'll re-approach it in the future. But that's one of the, that's one of the ways that we can kind of mitigate that. It is challenging to operate with the staffing numbers we have. That's a national problem and a local problem. And, look, in, when was it, 2008, I believe it was? We had 187 sworn officer positions. We weren't quite there, but we were pretty close. And even then, the chief of the police at the time advocated for, I believe in his report, an additional 90 officers.
Yeah.
City our size, we all know it. We should have a significantly larger police department. But again, we move forward with the team and with the resources that we have, and that's what we're doing.
So just to be clear, and I'll ask the question a little more directly. You had 138 officers authorized in 2021, 2022. You now have 128. And you're okay with that?
I'm not okay with that. I thought that was clear in my answer.
Okay.
It's a challenge, but we're, we're doing what we can with the resources we have. If I had my way, sure, we'd have 60 more officers.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
John makes, or Chief Murray makes a valid point. We were at 187. We never got there. We never got to 187, although that was the authorized strength. I don't remember what the number we got to was. I think it was 179, but the authorized strength was 187.
Understanding, though, that the authorized strength now is 128, 15 years later, with a larger population for our community. So, that's my, that was my ask.
I'd rather be working to fill 10 positions than 60, but we'll get there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Also, just in terms of recruitment and retention, you know, when you were talking about budget, I did hear a little bit in terms of how to actively recruit for officers. One of the things was honoring a classic formula for retirees, or for a retirement plan, to get older, like, more experienced officers. Is that something that you've looked at within the department for, just in terms of, like, making sure that you've got your staffing?
Yes, that's actually something I proposed. We were discussing that. Where that matters is in trying to draw lateral officers, working police officers from other cities to Salinas. Some other communities do it. Basically, if you're a working police officer and your retirement plan is 3% at 50, and you're looking at potentially lateraling to another agency, you're not going to go to one that doesn't offer that. You're not going to leave 3% at 50 for an agency that offers 3% at 57. It doesn't make financial sense. So there are some communities that are saying for lateral officers, we'll bring you onboard at 3% at 50, so you can maintain that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Those are all my questions, PD. I do have a question for finance. On Slide 13, the budget balancing strategies, I was trying to get through each one. You covered it very quickly, but there were a couple of things I did just notice. You said increasing the 5% vacancy factor. Just, I'm wondering if you can unpack that for me a little bit?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Craig. So last year, the vacancy factor was 2.2 million. And this year, it's, we're recommending 4.8 million, so increasing that vacancy factor.
So quite literally not filling positions in order to balance the budget?
So generally, agencies run anywhere from 5 to 15 vacancy factors. So that is on the low end of where we generally, or agencies generally, run with vacancy factors.
Okay. But that's what that is. A vacancy factor is intentionally not filling positions to balance a budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
I would just add, Mayor, because it's a good question, I'm glad you highlighted that. If we hire the 85 people that we have needing to hire, whether they're Johns, 25, police officers, or whatnot, we will come back to you and say, okay, we have a $4.8 million problem. We're not going to stop hiring.
Okay, got it. All right, Council has also asked a couple of my questions, so that's all I have for questions. Thank you, I appreciate it. We'll go out to the public on this item. Just because we are in the interest of time, I want to make sure everyone gets heard. We'll set the timer at 90 seconds, and we have our first public commenter. Welcome.
Yes, hello, thank you very much. Kevin Day, and I'm speaking as Government Affairs Liaison for the Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce. And I did read the budget. First, I showed up here at 3:35, figuring that the chamber would be full of people demanding more money or new programs. And I think this, this community has something to be proud of. I think people recognized, you know, it's important to balance the budget. It's great that you managed to do without spending cuts. And also, I have to say, when I first heard about the $20 million projected deficit early on, I said, here come the tax proposals. And I warned businesses, I said, you better be prepared for it, and you managed to go without it. And yes, I know, Councilman Rocha and Mayor Craig, you identified a couple of areas in which there were maneuvers done in the budget to make sure it was balanced. And it was a good, crackful job, that's for sure. Hopefully, we can get more, enough business development, economic development, to make sure that the revenue is available, so that we take care of this. There were a couple of things I saw that might be of interest. First, the vacancies. Of course, if people immediately ask about that, I think a chart of vacancies by department would be useful. Those enterprise funds, where they're not going to put in at this time, the transfers in, could be good to identify those. The downtown parking district is one of those. Finally, a lot of people say, we hear about grants, but what are these? Make a list of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening. I'd just like to say, I think the best thing for the buck in our entire budget, Mr. Kellin. One, less than 1%, and he has to deal with all of the liability that the council people put forward on us. So I appreciate that, but, you know, we're talking about reserves, and throwing these numbers around, and, oh, we're doing a great job, and all this good stuff, right? What kind of reserves do we have? We have a half a billion dollars of unfunded liability and holdover from previous years of abject failure from the council, from the mayor, for decades. And now we're here, and all I can think of is you're going to come up with the next cockamamie project that we've got to burn money on. We're putting urinals in girls' bathrooms because of a guy that thinks he's a girl. When's that coming next? You know, we have a panel of unemployed people pontificating to us about how they're going to fix all these problems. It's a mess. I come out of my office on the corner of San Luis and Main today with a man homeless laying on the street, with his clothes pulled over, sobbing. And they're triangulating the homeless people within Old Town, and it's going to become very dangerous. And we're just up here, and it...
I'm going to ask that you stick to the budget. That's what we're talking about.
This is the budget. Homelessness, right? Where are we going with the homelessness? It's a total failure, throwing money down a hole, and this board is a complete failure like the rest of us.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Chris Bunn. Thank you for the discussion, the presentation. Obviously, you've got a lot of potential revenue sources that already exist. Your sales tax and property tax, your various measures, E and G. I understand you have the option of re-upping Measure G later on, your franchise money, things like that. But obviously, you're in a fragile financial situation. So it makes me wonder what kind of conversations you have in private about revenue sources, and potential revenue sources. And that said, I became aware that Mr. Sandoval had a community meeting recently, during which he said that I was in favor of a new ag tax. And he, I think, I assume, was referencing a discussion we had several months ago. We were talking about water, and at the end of that discussion, he asked me out of the blue, what do you think about an ag tax? And I'm afraid you misinterpreted my polite response as agreement. I try to be polite. I'm happy talking about anything, but that doesn't mean I agree with it. I'm dead set against any kind of ag tax. I'm dead set against any kind of increase in tax for any kind of business. And to be honest, if you really want to improve your budget, you need to think long and hard about how can you make the city of Salinas a haven for business? Make this place a magnet for business. Think about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
My name's Bradley Clinton. I've been doing service requests for the roads for seven months. And for seven months, and finally, finally, the pecking order, I thought the mayor had all the power. No, it's the city manager. So the city manager has the right to tell anybody they need to do their job correctly. And I've been asking him and Mr. Jacobs about, about the way that, with the roads are, how to improve it. And he just proved to me that he knows how to fix roads, but he really doesn't. Because he's talking about, about not cutting, cutting them out. Yes, he doesn't cut them out to save time, but he's coming back four or five times to refill that pothole.
I'm going to ask that you stick to the budget.
It is about potholes. You guys are wasting money on potholes. You guys need to fix, do they have a tar machine here? They need to fix the cracks. That's where the problem is. So I put it to Jim, if his job is to make people work, then get Public Works to do their job. Because I think I could do their job better.
Sir, stick to the budget.
You guys are wasting money on the roads, big time. You guys took a curb out of my neighborhood, and just because you didn't want to reattach it to the sidewalk. Now, what's going to happen, that sidewalk is going to fall in because there's no curb. And you said, you put it on a 25-year list, saying that, who's going to pay half of it? So you guys need to understand that it's not, things don't work that way. Just do your job, and if you can't do your job, get out. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Grayson Ayala, and I am six years old. I want to talk to, talk to you about the city's budget. When I get allowance, I have to decide how to spend or save it. The rec center and the park, I also go to the rec center and the park every day, and I love them both. When I look at your budget, it's like allowance and where you choose to spend it. I noticed that the departments that affect my life, like police, fire, public works, parks, and libraries, have less than 1% increase in their allowance for next year. That makes me think the problems they have now won't get solved anytime soon because they don't have the money they need. When my mom brought me to a meeting last year, I got to put stickers on a board to show what was important to me. I chose police, parks, roads, and libraries. It seems like you guys didn't understand my choice, didn't listen to my choices. Please think about...
If you want, you can turn in your letter to the city clerk, and she'll make sure that we get all of your comments. Thank you. And thank you for your courage for coming to council.
Hello, my name is Thomas Ayala, and I am eight years old. I overheard my mommy and daddy talking about this meeting and the budget. I wanted to share some thoughts with you. I know the budget talks about keeping our city nice by making our streets safer, fixing sidewalks, and being careful with money. These are important goals, but there's a big problem. The budget says we may not have enough money, and might need to cut budget, says we, uh, services, or find other ways to save money. My dad always says, always have a plan, and my mom, and my mom says, have multiple plans. That sounds like good advice for adults like you. So while you figure out the budget, please remember your priorities and goals. Most of you probably drove here today. I don't drive yet, but many people walk everywhere. This picture of North Sandborne Road between Del Monte and Freedom shows you where hundreds of kids, families, and families walk every day. It's overgrown with weeds and full of garbage. I had to walk every day. I had to walk really close to the road at times. That's dangerous.
I just want to say thank you to the Ayala boys for coming to city council. Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Cindy Hyatt. I'm the Housing Lead with Downtown Streets Team. Downtown Streets Team is fighting homelessness through the dignity and work, of work and the power of community. Our Volunteer Work Experience Program invites people experiencing homelessness to volunteer on teams dedicated to cleaning streets, parks, waterways, and other public spaces while they chart a path out of homelessness. Well, we are a low-barrier program, where the only eligibility requirement is that an individual is currently experiencing homelessness. DST provides comprehensive case management services to our unhoused community members, helping them achieve their goals, whether it's finding permanent housing, employment, or securing their vital documents. Our Supported Employment Program, Streets Team Enterprises, is a social enterprise that provides paid employment and case management for people impacted by homelessness, systemic trauma, and incarceration. DST launched operations in Salinas in 2019, and we are proud to be celebrating our fifth anniversary this year. We've served over 576 individuals and helped them remove more than 4,400 barriers in their way of self-sufficiency. In July 2022, we launched our Rapid Re-Housing Program, where we provide rental assistance and financial assistance to participants in addition to case management services. To date in that program, we've helped housed 126 individuals through Rapid Re-Housing, and that breaks down to 71 adults and 55 children. We love the work we do, and we're grateful for the opportunity to serve our community in this way. And we'd like to ask the City of Salinas's budget request around homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, City Council, Madam Mayor. Luis Chagojuez, we're building healthy communities, and we are actually representing the Salinas Coalition for Housing Rights. And we're requesting, requesting a budget, making a budget request here. You know, and we basically were asking for more money to be allocated to community development so that, so that there can be a concerted effort, focus around rental registry. As we know, our, our population, our community, is huge, a huge renter population, very vulnerable, very challenged by the economic constraints that they're facing on a monthly basis, on a daily basis. And we have been in this effort, you all know, since, we'll say, since last year, since the fall of last year, or late summer, early fall of last year. So now, we're, we're hoping that you can consider putting that investment into the rental registry, because we continue hearing in a lot of these conversations how important the information is and the communication. Because, again, a lot of our renters, our neighbors, are either monolingual Spanish speakers or monolingual indigenous speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Karen Arajo. I live here in Salinas, have all my life. I support what was just stated at this podium. When I left my home of 30 years due to targeted foreclosure that targeted people with Hispanics... surnames, Spanish speakers, and Latinos, I did not know where I was going to sleep that night despite having a job for 16 years. The only solid thing I had was my car. So I could not rent a place. They wanted two incomes, two full-time incomes for a studio apartment in my hometown. So I support what was just said. I also want to commend the process here. You all take a beating. People think you are doing a full-time job. They don't realize that you're basically volunteers with a stipend. Thank you for your effective work. Thank you for this process. I look forward to you approving this budget with all the improvements that you will bring forward after hearing the public's opinion. I find you to be a wise body, a compassionate body, an ethical body, an innovative body, and you don't deserve all the negativity coming your way, because you make tough decisions every day. I don't always get what I want. I'm sure you all don't always get what you want. But you listen to people and have great processes like this and make good, solid decisions. Thank you for your leadership. And I didn't plan to speak now, but I'm glad I did.
All right, anyone else in chambers want to speak in public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll go over to Zoom. Any members of the public on Zoom wish to speak on this topic? If so, please use the raise hand icon. All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment. Council members, I'd ask that you keep your comments succinct. I've had both the city attorney and the city manager remind me we have a hard stop at 6:00, and this is an information-only study session. With that, thank you very much, and we'll go to Councilmember Osorio for final comments.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to thank all the department heads and all of the staff for putting this budget together. Thank you, city manager. I also just wanted to thank admin, because I know that it's not a huge budget item, but for me, it just makes so much sense, the language access to the interpretation. That's really big. It's been a priority of this council. So I just wanted to thank the city clerk for bringing that forward and the onboarding. Again, I thought that it was important, especially when you want to get more folks engaged, civically engaged, and you want to put them on boards and commissions and committees. They want to donate that time, but they don't know how to, and it can seem very overwhelming, very daunting. And I think that that's really going to help us bring more folks that want to get engaged to be able to feel confident that when they're up here, they know Robert Rose Vorder and things like that. So those are two items that I am really excited to see. And also, the policy draft, also, I'm looking forward to that. So I just really just wanted to give a shout out to the city clerk for those two items. I'm very supportive of those. And then, and secondly, you know, there's a lot of good things to celebrate, but I do want to focus on two areas that I would like to see, maybe some updates brought back. But I really feel that our unsworn positions, I think that we should really look at that and see how we can create more unsworn positions. The community service officers is something that I think this council has been very vocal about, especially when our sworn officers have to go through training, and we have to make sure that we're being competitive. I think that it would, you know, what is it, maybe one unsworn, two, three, four? I'm not too sure. But, city manager, I would like for something to come back as a recommendation to add some unsworn positions, some community service officers, because in the meantime that we get all of those sworn positions filled, I think that this would be a great way to still be able to be responsive when somebody calls and there's, whether it be a car parked out in front of the house, whether it be, you know, loud noise or something. I think just folks feeling more secure, that they can, you know, get somebody to go out there. I'm just a real big supporter of having more folks on staff. And then, who knows, maybe these folks that are unsworn could start working for the department, and then maybe one day they want to be sworn officers. I'm not sure. But I just want to see something there happen. And I know that this is a balanced budget, but also seeing that we have two vacancies in the permit department, I would say, is there a way that we can add another two positions inside of that permit department, just so that we can do, I mean, maybe double the work? I feel that if there's an incentive that can be also brought forward to be able to hire those permit technicians, but I just, I really feel that we have to do something to be able to see these plans being checked a lot faster and just get a lot more production. I know they're already doing a great job, but I would be in favor of that. And if there is some reserves, or if we say, well, we don't got the money for it, I feel that adding some positions there in the permit center, I feel like it'll pay itself. But those are just two of the only recommendations. The budget looks, it looks pretty good. So thank you. No further comments.
Councilmember Barrera.
Mr. P., I want to thank you for your great work. This is, actually, every time I go through this, this is a boring binder, but you know what? This time around, I really studied it. I sat down and, so thank you for your work, Mr. P. And Mr. P., I want to acknowledge, in your letter, you acknowledged your staff. I want to say something to this professional staff. You know, I'm always humbled to be able to govern professional individuals. You folks can run circles around me, and you're very smart, and we're happy that you're here. And you know, as a council, we have our own responsibility, and that's to address the needs of our community, along with your good work. So to all the department heads, thank you very much. To all the city staff that has helped on this. And Mr. P., you mentioned Ms. Selena Andrews, our finance director. Thank you, Mr. A. Pedrosa. I know he's been a hoot for a while here with this. He's our senior finance management analyst. And Mr. Pedrosa, we're blessed to have you here. Yesenia Nunez, finance management analyst, and Mr. Nick Luciano, the administrative analyst. And I'm very happy to be part of this team. And Mr. P., let's just continue doing the great work. And you know, to the people that we serve, I know some people say this is a hard gig. I enjoy it, you know? The public has the luxury of criticizing us, and you know, that's, they can do that. But hopefully, we, every now and then, we do something good out of the park. And Mr. John Murray, you're doing a hell of a great job, sir. I mean, I really appreciate the work you did last night as well. We had almost 200 people out there. And the people out in the community, they like you as our chief, so, and I like you as our chief as well. To all your police department, if you can let them know, almost 90% of homicides have been solved, so, and that is amazing. So keep up the good work, and we're going to try to get you some more officers. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Gonzalez, final comments.
T minus two minutes, so I'll be brief. Thank you very much to city staff for all the hard work on this. You know, it's clear that it takes a lot of cooperation and collaboration. Really appreciative that we're being proactive, looking into the forecast, looking into innovative restructuring, and hopeful that if and when it comes to that scenario, we keep engaging with the public and keep making sure that we are looking at what affects residents' lives the most. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandoval.
I just want to let the public know, we are doing the best we can. A lot of these issues we're facing, whether it's shortages in staff with our PD, our Public Works, our roads, it's been a long time coming, and we're doing the best, trying to be more proactive. Really quick, because we are going to make a hard stop at 6:00. I had a chance to go on a ride-along, and I fully support the multipurpose officers as we're dealing with shortages. Those are really big savings to our officers, so they can do the valuable work that they need to do. But to all our staff, HR, community development, I mean, this is a historic budget, maybe not in numbers, but the overall approach. And to our city manager, you did an amazing job with the community sponsorship program. It showed responsibility with our finances, but an intentional, cultural, diverse approach across section of our city is now going to be served better. So thank you all.
Councilmember Rocha.
Go ahead. I'm going to usurp, and we're going to give you two, and I'm going to give 60 seconds, so go for it.
All right, thank you so much. I just want to thank our staff for all of your hard work on this process, especially the Finance Department, all of our community engagement staff, for the intensive outreach you did to engage residents in this process. I want to thank our interim city manager for your leadership. This budget, I think, is really going to preserve the progress we've made in the last couple of years while being mindful of the financial situation we're in, which is really important. I do want to point out that in this budget, we're going to continue our Mobile Crisis Unit, which is a top priority for this council, continue to invest in our Prevention and Intervention Wellness Grant, which supports the amazing work of community-based organizations that are working to make our community safer and reduce violence, and invest in the well-being of our residents. We're going to increase our park maintenance staff, which is something that we've been trying to do for a long time, and each year, we're slowly inching further and further, and hopefully, we could get to better staffing levels in the coming years. And that's in addition to carrying over $120 million with prior CIP projects and an additional $18 million in new projects. And that's direct investment in our neighborhoods, on our streets, and improving the quality of life for our residents. My comment, as it relates to the reserves, is if we can find any money this year or in the subsequent years to increase our reserves, that would be my request of the city administration and of this council. We're at 12%. I'd like to see us get to somewhere closer to 20% in the next decade, hopefully. There are other cities up and down the state that are far higher, and I think for us, if we want to make sure that we can avoid any kind of layoffs, any reduction in city services, having a strong and healthy economic contingency reserve is critical towards maintaining essential city services and weathering any financial storm. But there's a lot to be grateful for in this budget, and I am certainly grateful to our city staff. So thank you so much. And lastly, I would add that I would really support changing the seven eliminated positions to being frozen. It is a real difficult process to get positions added to the budget, and once they've been eliminated, it's really difficult to get them returned to the budget. So if we can make it frozen, unfunded, and then once we have the funding to activate those positions, that would be my request, I think those are critical positions to fund, especially, or to keep on the books, especially when we're already understaffed. Those are all my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll just make the acknowledgement, I continue to be concerned about police staffing. I know Fire has done very well. I know Public Works, and I know there are vacancies across the board for the most part, but that number I have watched continually decrease over the last 14 years. I will just make a housekeeping request. The Finance Subcommittee, when this was presented, gave some direction, because, you know, there's a first iteration, and then we get a second iteration for the June 11th meeting, that the second iteration have the changes to what you've made, either highlighted or redacted, so that the council can see where those changes were made. It's hard to look at 500 pages, have the binder taken away, and then get a new binder and try to remember where all the changes were made. So just making it very clear for both the council and the public to see what changed between today and June 11th. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn to closed session. Nope, sorry, it's a break. Sorry, not closed session, wrong terminology. It's a break, and we'll re-adjourn, we'll come back for re-adjournment or reconvening at 6:30. All right, good afternoon, everyone. We are back in session and opening our public hearing on item 24-287, the City Council District Three vacancy, interviews of applicants and appointments. Appointment, there's only one seat. With that, we have our city clerk, Patricia Barajas, here to give the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Most of what I'm going to go over right now was outlined in the staff report, and I believe we discussed a little bit about that process during, when council directed the staff to proceed with the appointment process. So with that, I'll just go ahead and proceed. So before us this evening is a public hearing to consider the City Council District Three vacancy, including the council interviews of the applicants, followed by council deliberation and appointment of one person to fill the District Three City Council vacancy. The process will proceed as follows. In order to ensure a fair and transparent process, applicants will be interviewed one at a time by the city council. Until their individual turn, the applicants will be in the legal conference room within City Hall. All applicants will be restricted from using mobile devices or other technology while in the legal conference room. In a moment, names will be drawn at random by me, your city clerk and elections official, to determine the interview order. Applicants will be escorted to the rotunda individually for their interview until all applicants have been interviewed. Applicants will have three minutes to make an opening statement and introduction to the city council. The city council will conduct the interview with the mayor and council members, each asking one question for a total of six questions. Follow-up questions or modifications to the questions provided will not be allowed. Questions will begin from the left of the dais to the right, so starting with Councilmember Osorio and ending with Councilmember Rocha. Applicants will have one minute to respond to each question, and applicants will have one minute to make a closing statement. There will be an opportunity for the members of the public to provide public comment following the interview proceedings, and public comment will be restricted to 90 seconds per speaker. The city council will then deliberate and appoint one person to fill the District Three seat until a successor is elected in the November 5, 2024 general municipal election. The appointees' oath of office and first meeting will be on June 11, 2024. And now, we will proceed with the random drawing of the District Three applicant's names. So I have them here. Right. So first interview will be Joel Panzer. Mary Angela McNulty. Albert Fong. David Masonov. Carrie Lee Swanson. Karen Cameron. And Eloise Schin. So with that, we should have our first applicant coming in.
Eliana Jimenez from Monterey County Weekly.
He is here, so let's just make sure that he's on his way.
Do the candidates know which order they're in?
They will.
Welcome, Mr. Panzer. Come on down.
I get to kick it off.
You're the first contestant.
Come on down.
I just want to welcome you, and first and foremost, on behalf of the city council, thank you for the courage for stepping forward and applying for the position of District Three City Council member. You have three minutes. We'll begin with a three-minute opening statement, and we're going to go ahead and time you, because we've got to make sure everyone is, it gives equal time. So, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, city manager. I'm Joel Panzer. I'm Joel Panzer, and I appreciate the opportunity to present myself for the District III Council vacancy. My father was a first-generation American. I recognize the opportunities that this country has provided our family, and in my adult life, I've always volunteered my time to give back to the communities I have lived in. I first moved to Salinas in 1985 to work for Monterey County. I lived in District 5 initially, renting a room on Eisenhower Street. In 1989, I moved to District 3 and rented a small apartment on West Street. When my wife and I could afford to buy our first house in 1999, we chose Salinas as the community we wanted to live in, and we now live on Pajaro Street. From a work standpoint, I've been involved in land use and permitting since 1985, first with Monterey County, then with a private developer, and since 2005, I've co-owned a land use consulting firm based in downtown Salinas. My work history has provided me with extensive experience with volunteer, with various local governments in Monterey County and their associated regulatory and political environments. I maintain good working relationships with elected officials and most agency staffs over the years. In addition to my work experience, I believe my volunteer experience speaks to my qualifications to serve on the city council. Since arriving in Monterey County, I've volunteered my time in a range of community organizations, as noted in my application. My first volunteer appointment in Salinas was to serve on the Chispa Board of Directors, and I also served on the Chimmy Board of Directors. I formed three nonprofits, including Community Park, a volunteer firefighting company, and a Historic Preservation Association that successfully lobbied the state to preserve the old Monterey County Jail. I was a co-author of that application to nominate that building to the National Register of Historic Places. It's the only historic landmark in Monterey County recognizing Cesar Chavez and the farmworkers' rights movement. I'm currently working on a, to form a foundation to preserve and reopen the El Rey Theater. Since 2014, I have also volunteered my time to serve on the Old Town Salinas Foundation, and since 2017, to be on the, to be the market manager for the successful downtown farmer's market. For the past six years, I've chaired the Salinas Valley Food and Wine Festival, and for the last three years, we've sold that event out. I've been on two downtown Salinas boards since 2010, including the Old Town Salinas Association, and since 2017, on the Salinas City Center Improvement Association. I've been interested in serving local government for a long time. I first ran for city council in 2006, and at that time garnered over 35% of the votes cast running against a sitting incumbent. In conclusion, I have the depth and breadth of experience to serve the city of Salinas and represent the residents of District III. If selected for the appointment, it would be my intention to serve until an elected council member is sworn in in December 2024. This would create an even playing field for the upcomer November 2024 election. Thank you.
Thank you. You don't get to go anywhere. We're not done with you yet. With that, we're going to, each council member is going to ask a question.
I was going to go.
No. Uh-uh. No, no. Q and A.
I was so nervous.
So, each council member's going to ask a question. You have one minute to respond, and we're going to start to my right, Councilmember Osorio.
What have you done to prepare for the important role of city council member? Have you reviewed the city's budget, general plan, or participated in city government?
I've worked under the general plan with representing clients, so I'm fairly familiar with that document. Not being on the council right now, I can tell you the city operational budget is 524 pages, and I've gotten into quite a bit of that. The capital improvement plan is 84, 86 pages. It takes a while to digest that level of documentation. And then professionally, we've had a number of clients go through the city of Salinas Community Development Department, so I'm very familiar with that on a regulatory basis. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Barrera, question?
Mr. Panzer, welcome.
Thank you.
Serving on the city council is a significant time commitment. Public officials often attend and participate in meetings and engage with constituents during business hours, evenings, and weekends. What is your approach to engaging with constituents and balancing your other commitments?
I've been balancing commitments for a fairly long time, based on what I just rattled off. I guess all I would say is I'm a good multitasker. I've managed to successfully work a full-time job, never quit your day job, and during all the volunteer activities I've been on, it's just a matter of balancing, prioritizing, and adjusting for time. I do a lot of phone work with, like, Salinas Valley Food and Wine. I'm on the phone now, setting things up. It just, that comes natural to me. I don't see any issue. It is a commitment of time, and I've also discussed it with my wife, and given the fact that I would not plan to run for reelection, it's, you know, a fixed period of time, and we're both comfortable with that time commitment.
Councilmember Gonzalez, question?
Mr. Panzer, please share with us an example on how you approach working with others effectively as a team, particularly when you might disagree with a colleague.
I've served on a number of boards. When I came in on the Chispa-Chimmy thing, that was a court-ordered appointment because of whatever was going on behind the scenes there, and it's a matter of mutual respect. You can have, you can have a disagreement in terms of a position, but, you know, you've just got to keep it on the level. I mean, you've got to hear what people have got to say, understand their point of view. Hopefully, they'll understand your point of view, and I do recognize in our democratic society, you look at the number of people up there, you count your votes. Compromise, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval?
Mr. Panzer, what do you?
I got put in my place. Okay, so I'm going to ask the next question. How do you think the city should address areas where the city is underfunded? For example, unfunded pension liability, city services, or aging infrastructure?
Actually, I got to that part in the city budget, and it is a balancing act. Part of what I think the city has done is they've put some of the city services out to third-party bids. Part of that balancing act is unfunded positions, which is pretty tough when you're trying to run a city and you don't have those positions funded. You know, I kind of wondered what struck me in the budget is, you know, some of the vehicle replacement, and I see brand-new fire cars out in the parking garage, and the fire department's allocating, was it 100 and some thousand now? Does that close a $20 million budget gap? It does not. But are there just other approaches in terms of how the city can keep up its level of And I hate to say it, some of it may be outsourcing.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval, your question?
Yeah, Mr. Panzer, what do you see as the role of the city council? And then, what do you see as the role of the staff?
The city council provides overall general policy direction. The city council, I think, does not meddle in the day-to-day affairs of departments and how departments are organized and running. They work with the city manager's office, work through the city manager's office to bring issues up and try to address them. They work with other council members, I would say it, to bring issues forward for the council to discuss and debate, and the council is big global 30,000-foot policy level and decision-making on ordinances, on budgets, and so forth, with the day-to-day work being done by staff. Now, during council meetings, you have the opportunity to discuss with staff or question staff when items are brought before you to understand their perspective, but the way I would see it is you would always go through the city manager's office if there was something you wanted to learn more about or become more informed about to make an informed decision.
Councilmember Rocha, question?
Welcome.
Thank you.
How have you remained current and informed on city issues? Give specific examples of your personal involvement.
Personal involvement? Well, I live downtown, I'm right across the street from the city permit center, was up until April on the Salinas City Center Improvement Association, where we follow the city fairly closely. The farmer's market is a great example of implementing the city's vibrancy plan. I'm an astute person. I read, I understand, I absorb, I interact. That's the way to do it. You don't have to sit in a council meeting to, like, really get what's going on. I mean, there's a lot of talk out on the street about what's going on, and I think to become a council member, okay, here's what I'm hearing, now what's the reality of that? So, I think that would be it, and I've been in and around local government since 1985, and that's a skill set in of itself to understand political environments. I do a lot of work with Monterey County, so you track what's going on. Insofar as I have a land use consulting firm, I'm more in tuned, I would say, on general plan, zoning, the building services processes over there, but I pay attention to other things.
Thank you. And, Mr. Panzer, I'm going to give you one minute for a closing statement.
Ooh. In closing, I recently came across a quote from President Theodore Roosevelt that reads, "The first requisite of a good citizen in this republic of ours is that he shall be able and willing to pull his weight, that he shall not be a mere passenger." For my adult life, I have not been a mere passenger. When not working, I have consistently voted time for the betterment of my community. I have no conflicts of interest that would impede my carrying out the work required of a council member. If the council approves my appointment, I believe that I have the experience and temperament to work collaboratively with fellow council members and serve the best interests of our city for the seven months of this appointment until a new council member is sworn into office. At a political level, I also understand what can reasonably be accomplished within a seven-month timeframe. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Panzer, and if you wouldn't mind just having a seat right there. And I'm assuming we have our next candidate coming?
Juan Chavez.
Hi, Mr. Chavez.
Hello.
Welcome. Just the order of operations. First and foremost, I want to say thank you very much for your courage and your willingness to step forward as a candidate for District 3, for the city council seat. And we'll start with a three-minute introduction, and then council will have some questions after that.
Sounds good.
You may start.
Good evening, fellow council members, Mayor Craig, staff, and the public behind me. I would like to say thank you for giving me the chance to be up here. Who am I? My name is Juan Chavez. I have been a law, law residence here in Salinas, California. I have been in the school system, public school system, my whole life. I went to Sherwood Elementary with Mr. Gondolles as my principal. I went to Washington Middle School, then I went to Salinas, right down the street. Then I continued my studies into top polis and list of visual, got my Bachelor of Science in agricultural and environmental plant science. Then I continued my educational path. I received my Masters from the University of Massachusetts Global in Master of Arts in Teaching, and I did not stop there. I continued my studies. As of recently, this past Sunday, I graduated with my doctoral degree in exemplary leadership. So, I know a little bit about leadership. What are my hobbies? What are my hobbies? I enjoy running, I enjoy reading, I enjoy coaching, as well as I like helping the community. What are my certifications and awards as a teacher? I received my 2016, I received Salinas California Honor Roll Teacher. 2022, I received nominated for the Teacher of the Year. And also, I enjoy being part of the community. Why am I here today? I'm here to do what I tell the teachers to do every single day, and what is that? To make a change, to come in and make an impact, not just in my school, but meet the needs of everybody. As a teacher, I have to meet the needs of the students every single day, and that is what I plan on doing if appointed by the city council. And what is that? That is meet the needs of the public that's here, that's interested, and support them. And how am I going to do that? By listening, making sure, put my collective interest up front, and making sure I'm here to support them, because I know leadership, I studied it for four years, I understand what it takes to be a great leader, not just the theory, but actual practical. Because I teach, I'm also the teacher in charge, as well as I am in charge of Saturday Academies. I run through and work with thousands of kids, as well as hundreds of teachers.
Excellent. Thank you. And with that, we'll start our questioning. You have, each council member will ask a question. You'll have one minute to answer each question.
Sounds great.
We'll start to my right, Councilmember Osorio.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming up and stepping up. This is obviously very important. What have you done to prepare for the important role of a city council member? Have you reviewed the city's budget, general plan, or participated in any city government?
I have participated in local city government by supporting community events. I have been a volunteer member for Siclovia, part of the community, very important. I also go to board meetings, as well as city, as well as school board meetings. So, that is being an active participant. I also share in public comment. That is very important. Us, as a public, want to make sure our voices is heard, and we make sure we share what we feel, because we're here, we are the community, we are the ones that vote you in, so we want to make sure we let our voices heard, as well as making sure we have the collective interest. It's about helping the community, it's not about individuals, about specifically reaching a specific goal, it's about the community collective interest. And for the budget, want to make sure, I've looked at the budget, we are now not in the green, I understand that. And what does it take to go in the green? It takes collective interest, working collaboratively among each individual that's here, as well as the community members behind me, making sure we come in a consensus. How are we going to support the budget? There's areas we need to cut, that's part of life. But how do we do it properly and effectively to benefit the safety of everybody?
Thank you. Okay. We'll go on to Councilmember Barrera, your question, you have one minute to respond.
Well, welcome, Dr. Chavez.
Thank you.
Serving on the city council is a significant, significant time commitment. Public officials often attend and participate in meetings and engage with constituents during business hours, evenings, and also weekends. What is your approach to engaging with constituents and balancing other commitments?
I actually do have four jobs, and I still manage my personal life very effectively. I'm the teacher in charge at Rosa Elementary, you could walk down the street and turn around, that's where I work here, there in my district. Also, I do fundraisers and I volunteer in the community. My commitment is to the people. I'm not here to do what I want to do, I'm here to support the community. If I have to stay up late on a phone call, one of my constituents calls, hey, I need support with this, this, and that, I'm going to stay up because that is my duty. They pay their taxes for my salary, and that is what I need to be, I need to be able to listen. In order to, for us to be great leaders, we want to have one thing, is be a great listener and understand the individual. It's about creating positive relationships. If you have positive relationships among your constituents, the community, and the city council, you're able to make great changes, but if you don't have that, it's going to be a hard challenge. You want to make sure these people behind me are the priority, and making sure we support them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, question?
Dr. Chavez, please share with us an example on how you approach working with others effectively as a team, particularly when you might disagree with a colleague.
Ah, disagreement is common, especially in the teaching world. You collaborate every Wednesday with my group. I have, I'm the great team lead at Rosa Elementary, I'm a third-grade teacher, I lead, and there's things that happen. There's always, oh, this strategy is better than this other strategy, so we have to come with a consensus. Sometimes I don't agree with their point of view or what they bring, but I have to agree with them, because we're not, we're here for the interest of the people, as well as my students. So, if a teacher scored higher on a specific community formative assessment, a test, I'll make sure, okay, what you did, okay, and I'll support her, and as well, she's support me. But it's part of leadership. You're going to disagree with people, but at the end of the day, you have to come with the consensus, what's best for the people, not myself. It's what's best for around, the students, as well as the constituents that are here behind me.
Excellent. Thank you. My question is, how do you think the city should address areas where the city is underfunded? For instance, the unfunded pension liability, some of our city services, and our aging infrastructure?
So, the most important thing is safety. As we talked about infrastructure, in order for us to be successful, especially with the low budget, you number one priority just in a school is what? Safety. Want to make sure the roads are safe, the community's safe, because if everybody's safe, they take pride in their school, they feel comfortable, they're able to walk, that leads to healthy mental well-being, that leads to lower obesity, that leads to more positive benefits. Number one priority with the deficit is the priority of the safety of individual, not just the physical safety, as well as the mental safety, and that is by taking pride in your city, understanding this needs to be done, and this other has to be done. We want to focus on, especially with a limited budget, on what's best for the collective interest, that is what everybody, and that is what is important with that question.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval, question?
Hi. What do you see the role of the city council, and what do you see as the role of the city staff?
The city council are here for the people. We're here for the people, we're here to support them in every, every way we can. It could be by listening, by helping sure we understand what they're going through, if they want us to vote in a measure, a specific measure, or a specific law, if they all want it, and even though I might not want it, it's for them. So, I'm going to vote for what they want. That is very important for our community.
Thank you. I'm sorry, were you done?
Oh, no. Yeah, I'm done with that one.
Okay. Councilmember Rocha?
Welcome. How have you remained current and informed on city issues? Give specific examples of your personal involvement.
My personal involvement and current issues, I watch in Zoom. I'm actually not here in person, but I'm in Zoom world. I'm over there seeing, I've seen various different things. For example, you guys recently passed the measure on going socioeconomic on the streets, which I was aware of that, and I keep keeping tabs with that specific, specific things like that that happen. I also listen to the people, what they want, and understand what their need to be supported in that area. So, I do follow the meetings, but virtually.
Excellent. Thank you. And we are concluding our questions. You have one minute to give. You have one minute to give a final, final comments to the council.
I would like to say thank you for giving me the chance to come up here in the podium. First off, I shared a little bit about educational, as well as my certification, my education, and the work I have done. I've appointed, I will definitely meet the needs of the people, as just as in a classroom, every day I adapt, I change. One day I come in a specific timeframe, I make sure I adjust and adapt what's best for the students. It's not what's best for me, it's what's best for the whole collective group. And I'm looking forward to hearing who gets appointed. If I don't get appointed, it's part of the process, and I'm looking forward to maybe running in November. And thank you for giving me the opportunity, everybody here, great questions.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And if you wouldn't mind just taking a seat right over there. We are now going to introduce Mary McNulty, I believe. Hi, Ms. McNulty, how are you?
All right. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. First and foremost, on behalf of the City Council, we want to say thank you for stepping forward and having the courage and the willingness to apply as the appointee for the District Three Council seat. Just a little bit of order of operations, we'll give you a three-minute opening statement.
Okay.
And then, we'll go through the council, each has a question for you, you'll have one minute to answer, so we'll start with your opening statement. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. In 1994, I chose to live in Salinas because of its natural beauty, agricultural fields and foothills surrounding us, climate and diversity. I've lived in District Three nearly 30 years. I am deeply rooted here, and I've seen and understand local issues firsthand. One of those issues is homelessness. It is a significant and persistent issue, bringing challenges involving safety, mental health, substance abuse, and economic challenges. Another is affordable and safe housing for our population. This is an urgent necessity. Our infrastructure is in dire need of care and repair. Usable, safe roads, sidewalks, parks, open spaces, and other infrastructure necessities must be addressed to enhance connectivity and the ease of safe travel, as well as living conditions. City administration faces significant leadership vacancies. We must attract and retain valuable and essential city staff while keeping a watchful eye on rising costs. We must attract investment and draw employers and businesses to provide more opportunities and services for residents. We must support education, including pre- and after-school programs. We must support law enforcement and the fire department to provide a safe and vibrant community for all. And we must strategically balance the budget and address and reverse our citizenry, our citizenry's dissatisfaction and feelings of loss of connection and voice with local government. And this is all with the ultimate goal of continuing to make Salinas a wholesome, beautiful, and safe living and working environment. I have a bachelor's degree in government from the University of San Francisco, also went to law school there. I retired on March 31st, 2023, from my position of 28 years as a Deputy District Attorney with Monterey County DA's Office. I served as a Deputy District Attorney in Tulare County for nine years before that. I have led, managed, and coordinated resolutions of criminal and mental health cases. I have engaged in public outreach for the community in my various assignments as a Deputy District Attorney. Public outreach is very important. It shows our citizens we care, and we are involved. My vision is, is that this City Council will use its talents and experience to create public trust, inclusivity, and connection for all residents. I plan to continue my- (beep) That would be the time limit. Can I just finish?
Finish your sentence.
I plan to continue my community connection through Rotary, but I hope to deepen that connection and service with this appointment to the Salinas City Council. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. We'll go to council member questions, you'll have one minute to respond, Ms. McNulty.
Okay.
I'll start to my right, Councilmember Osorio.
Thank you, welcome. What have you done to prepare for the important role of City Council member? And have you reviewed the city's budget, general plan, or participated in city government?
Well, I just retired from the DA's Office, so I haven't really had the opportunity to participate in city government for my entire career, because it was so busy. In preparation for this hearing, I've reviewed all the city documents on the Salinas website I could, I've gone beyond that and referred to books, particularly the one by, I think it's Carolyn McGibben. And, and I've read the city's plans for housing, for a budget, the, the plan that was commissioned in 2018, November of 2018, regarding all the issues in the city of Salinas. So, I've done as much as I could to learn and to be prepared, if you saw fit, to appoint me, to start right away with my feet hitting the ground running.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera, question?
Ms. McNulty, welcome, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Serving on the City Council is a significant time commitment. Public officials often attend and participate in meetings and engage with constituents during business hours, in the evenings, and on weekends. What is your approach to engaging with constituents and balancing your other commitments?
Well, my approach would be, it'd probably be more of a full-time position for me, to tell you the truth. Besides readying, readying myself for each issue that may came up, come up, attending meetings and whatnot, I'm sure I would end up working overtime, much like I did for my past career. So, and because it would be so engaging and so critical, I would have no hesitancy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, questions?
McNulty, please share with us an example on how you approach working with others effectively as a team, particularly when you might disagree with a colleague?
Well, my career actually involves a lot of disagreement. I mean, if you, if you say, if you use the word colleague broadly, that also included defense attorneys and judges. And so, every case has its challenges. Every case in my past career had, it was always unique, involving victims and witnesses, as well as the defendant. And so, for the most part, I, and when I say for the most part, I mean, I think a lot of my colleagues, being defense attorneys and judges, felt that I worked for a just resolution for all of them. And we worked together politely and with respect, and, and when we didn't, it didn't agree, and we went to trial, we still performed our jobs politely and with respect. And so, that's how I would work with other, I would continue to work with others. Sure.
How do you think the city should address areas where the city is underfunded? For example, our unfunded pension liability, city services, and our aging infrastructure?
Well, I think that's, of course, the most difficult aspect of your job. I think that, I think one thing we would need to do is share that with the citizenry and say, look, we have these needs, they're all important, but we have to address the more urgent, and here's why. And, and I was just talking with someone this morning about what she felt, a local businesswoman, what she felt Salinas's issues were, and she went right to roads, right to infrastructure. But she said, if I knew where other money was being spent with, with other priorities, you know, I could wait, I could sacrifice, because I do care about my city. And so, I think that's what a lot of people would feel. You know, everyone's aware, everybody has a budget, the city has a budget, and everybody does their best, and we have to do, or actually, well, I'll say we right now, we have to do our best to meet the needs of the city, or, you know, and actually, if you look back at the history of Salinas- (beep) -we have. (beep)
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, one minute goes quickly.
I know.
Councilmember Sandoval, questions?
Yeah, what do you see the role of the City Council? What do you see the role of the City Council, and what do you see as the role of the staff?
Well, this is a City Council manager type of government. And so, the City Council sets policies, priorities, and the staff and the city manager endeavor to effectuate those policies and directives. And I, I'm sure you work closely with Mr. Pia, as well as city staff members, who are critical in supporting you and making the city run the way we hope it should.
You're welcome. Councilmember Rocha?
Welcome. How have you remained current and informed on city issues? Give specific examples of your personal involvement.
How have I remained informed and my personal involvement? Well, I remain informed by talking to other residents, by watching the news, by sometimes, you know, actually seeing what the issues are in my past career, because we met it every day. And, and so, my personal involvement, frankly, was primarily occupied by my past career, is in trying to solve those problems, and actually researching what the problems were beyond what I was told by particular stakeholders, whether it was a defense attorney or a judge, because I want to settle for myself what, what the issues are, and how I think they should be best addressed, and then meet with them and discuss it openly. And that really did, you know, cause a lot of resolutions. And I was involved particularly in mental health prosecutions, these serious, I can't think of the name, I was going to say Salinas, sexually violent predators and whatnot, where there were much, many more stakeholders. (beep) And so, I, I worked to resolve cases with them as well. Sorry.
All right. Thank you. All right, we have gone through our list of questions. We will now give you one minute to make a closing statement to the council.
Thank you very much. As a City Council representative, I would be committed. I love the city and its citizens. I hope to cooperate, to cooperatively work and help improve it. I am resilient, I will withstand and recover from any difficulties. I will persevere, I will be persistent in completing our missions despite difficulty or delays, which are just part of life. I am determined, I am resolute and firm in achieving our goals, however long it takes or however difficult it may be. I look forward to working with all of you, the city staff, and our residents, to make Salinas the inspiration for other California cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. If you wouldn't mind having a seat right in the front row.
Right there, okay.
Yep. We're putting you all on display today.
Thank you.
And we are expecting Mr. Albert Fong next. Hi. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Fong, I want to, first and foremost, on behalf of the council, say thank you for stepping forward and your willingness to serve on, on City Council as an appointee, and your courage to step forward. We recognize it takes a lot to do that.
Thank you so much.
Just a point of housekeeping, we will give you a three-minute opening statement. Excuse me.
Okay. Prepared a little notes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Kimberly Craig and City Council members. Thank you for tonight's meeting to consider the appointment to the City Council District Three vacancy. I was born in, and grew up in Salinas. My family lived around the Hebron Heights area on Marcus Street. My mom worked in the green onion packing sheds, so my siblings and I, and I at the age of five, worked alongside with her. As a teenager, I worked in the fields picking strawberries, worked at gas stations, worked at a tractor company, and I was a gopher there. I went gopher this, gopher that. And I worked at several restaurants, including the infamous restaurant, the Republic Cafe in Chinatown. I was washing dishes, waiting on tables, cooking, and the janitorial services. Neither one of my parents spoke English or drove. My dad was the ranch house cook at Hanson Ranch, now the Ben Guard Ranch. So, we had the luxury of living on the ranch, roaming all over Salinas on foot or on a bicycle. We did taxi to the ranch with my mom to see dad on the weekends. I went to Sherwood School, Elsal Middle School, graduated from Elsal High School, Hartnell College, and then UC Berkeley. I have been a financial advisor with UBS Financial Services for 28 years, and with Wedworth Security for the last 17 years. My work ethics are work with honesty, integrity, be truthful with disclosure and transparency. And we will meet our goals and accomplish much. Currently, I am serving on the City LCS Library Community Service Commission since May of 2015. I was appointed by the late Mayor Joe Gunter, a close family friend that I met when he was a police officer on the streets. I have served on the Hartnell Foundation Board, on the Investment Committee for the past 15 years. I have served on the SBA MHS, now Salinas Valley Health Advisory Board, passing the Voters' Rights Act in 2011. I am on numerous nonprofit boards, including 40 years with the Chinese-American Citizens Alliance, both national and local, and my church board for over 40 years. I've been an assistant boys' and girls' tennis coach for over 15 years at Alvarez High School and Salinas High. Currently, I am captain of a Sherwood tennis team, and playing at Seascape tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM. Come and watch us if you like, we will entertain you. And Seascape is in second place currently, and my Sherwood team, Salinas team, is number one. It's a men's team, and the age requirement is you have to be 18 years old. So, why am I here? Many years ago, I asked myself the same question, why am I doing this LCS Commission? I found one word that describes the purpose to be, is to be an advocate, advocate for the city that I love and the people I love. I have been a resident of District Three for the past 50 years. I love working with the good and friendly, intelligent people to find solutions for our communities.
Thank you.
And for this beautiful and safer, peaceful community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize to the public, it's one of those things that when you're on the stage and you swallow incorrectly, you get to be in front of everyone doing that, but very much appreciate that. We'll go on. We'll go on to questions. Each council member has a question for you, and you'll have one minute to respond. We'll start to my right, Councilmember Osorio.
Welcome. What have you done to prepare for the important role of City Council member? Have you reviewed the city's budget, general plan, or participated in city government?
Orlando, thank you for asking that question. And I have not. The reason is because I usually try to work on issues and problems, and look at it and review it, and then work to find solutions.
Thank you.
Mr. Fong, welcome. I'll let the mayor have a break there.
Yeah, go ahead.
Serving on the City Council is a significant time commitment. Public officials appear often attend and participate in meetings and engage with constituents during business hours-
Tony, I can't hear you too well.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, a little better.
Let, let me start over real quick. Serving on the City Council is a significant time commitment. Public officials often attend and participate in meetings and engage with constituents during business hours, evenings, and weekends. What is your approach to engaging with constituents and balancing other commitments?
That's a very good question. I'm a very responsible person, and I've been on the Library Community Service Commission, and if you look at the record, I haven't missed very many meetings. I always take my responsibilities seriously, because that's the only way it's going to work. I don't like to procrastinate, I like to deal with things and try to do the work and be responsible with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, your question?
Fong, please share with us an example on how you approach working with others effectively as a team, particularly when you might disagree with a colleague?
I've been on many boards, and sometimes you may not have a solution. And I've always heard this term that we agree to disagree. But I always like to hear and respect what other people think and say, because sometimes they might have something that you didn't think about. And being married for 50 years, I learned to listen. And four happy children that are married and 13 grandkids. So, I do listen.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. How do you think the city should address areas where the city is underfunded? For instance, our unfunded pension liability, our city services, or aging infrastructure?
With that question, since I am a financial advisor, what I look at is priorities. And what may best serve the community or the city? Look at where the money, the resources should go. And I've seen a lot of that happening in my nine years with the Library Community Service. And we've done a lot of good things in our city to beautify it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval?
What do you see as the role of the city council? And what do you see as the role of the staff?
The city council, I think it's important for each of the council members to listen to their constituents and see where we can find solution to work together with. Because even being on the commission, I've heard people way back when they were complaining the parks weren't watered, but we were in a period where there was droughts. And you just have to communicate with them and let them know what's going on. Even this morning, I had a call to help with a homeless situation in Chinatown. And there was a large encampment. And I was able to work with the police, and they were very professional. And we were able to come to a resolution with the encampment people, families living there, and also the property owners. And I was just more of an interpreter and in-between person.
Councilmember Rocha?
Welcome.
Thank you, Anthony.
How have you remained current and informed on city issues? Give specific examples of your personal involvement.
What involvement?
Your personal involvement.
Well, I could see in the media, and I have a lot of friends that actually follow the news. So I listen to them and I hear their opinions. And sometimes we talk about what we could do. Even today with the candidates, we're all on a table and everybody's talking. But I usually listen and don't give a final answer until I have all the information. But thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Fong. We're going to go ahead. That concludes our questions. We'll give you one minute for a closing statement.
Okay. In closing, I just wanted to thank all of you and wish you all well for your consideration today. And I want to thank you for your hard work. And I know it's a big commitment for all of you. And it's a lot of hard work to making Salinas a great city. And I know you will appoint the most qualified candidate for the position of our city council District III. And I thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you wouldn't mind having a seat right here in front, front row, like church. There you go. And we are going to go on to our next applicant, David, and I'm going to screw up your last name.
That's okay.
Masonow?
Close, that's good.
Okay.
Masonev.
Masonev, okay.
All right, so.
So just a brief welcome and acknowledging, thank you very much for stepping forward with your willingness to apply for the District III city council seat. And we recognize on behalf of the council that that's a big step. And so we just want to say thank you for that. We're going to give you three minutes for an opening statement, and then the council will have some questions for you.
Okay. Well, thank you, council and mayor. I've lived in Salinas since 1994, raised my kids here, and seen a lot of changes, mainly population. Place is just exploding. I see needs in the city that I know you do too. Needs that need to be addressed because we can't ignore them too much longer. I'll just, I'll just get out right now and just say the one word that everybody's been probably talking about, potholes. And then after that, I'm done with that. But those are, that's the type of thing that when you let it go, it's going to cost more in the long run. So what I would like to do as a council member is help look at spending, be a little more open to seeing what, what, are we getting a good bang for our buck? You know, I see money going towards homeless, and yet our homeless population has exploded. And I know there are some very good programs going on. But at the same time, we as a city need to support, not financially support. We don't always have to financially support. I see us being able to maybe streamline permit processes and do things that aren't necessarily money out of the pocket, but would help a nonprofit set things up for the homeless and work, you know. And so they need, they need shelter. They need services. They need to be able to have community and safety, just like the rest of us do. So that's kind of a, one of the things I had put on my sheet was the homeless situation. The other one was the potholes. And then the other one was the police. And as we all know, after listening to the budget, obviously, the police are still an issue, and we still need them. And we're always going to need them. And they're hardworking individuals. But in order to get to certain levels in society, we need to push a little harder with the police. And that doesn't sound good the way I just said it, but yeah. So I'm just seeing that there are things we can do that don't necessarily cost money every time we think of a new program. Or we can go, we need to, we need to be going to the community. And I know you guys do. I've been coming for the last three months, and I've been seeing you talk about all the different events that are happening and how you support the community. And that's awesome. And that needs to continue. Okay.
Thank you. The council will have a series of questions. You'll have one minute to answer each one.
Okay.
Okay, I'll start to my right, Councilmember Osorio.
Welcome.
Thank you.
What have you done to prepare for the important role of city council member? Have you reviewed the city's budget, general plan, or participated in city government?
Haven't really participated in city government other than coming to the city council meetings for the last, consistently for three months. I have been coming before off and on. But what I've been doing, and the first time I decided I'm going to start coming to the meetings, was I opened up the agenda, which I didn't even know I could access, right? And then I started clicking on things, and I started reading. And then when I came to the meeting, it was like, hey, this is kind of fun. I actually know what they're talking about, right? I mean, how many of us come to these city council meetings and just go, I don't get it, you know? And so it's, it's important to be able to get the information ahead of time, take a look at it, and, and know what's what. And so that's, that's been my main focus the last few months. Before that, I have to be honest, it was very sporadic.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera?
Mr. Masonev, welcome.
Thank you.
Serving on the city's council is a significant time commitment. These public officials often attend and participate in meetings and engage with constituents during business hours, in the evenings, and also on weekends. What is your approach to engaging with constituents and balancing your commitments?
Well, it's funny you should ask about that because up until two years ago, my business was so busy. I'm a real estate appraiser by trade. I was so busy, I couldn't even have thought of running for city council, though it was on my mind. But I just like, I can't make this happen. Well, things have slowed down. So I have time now. And I'm a little older and maybe a little wiser, or just older, I don't know. But so we get to, I have more time. So I know that there's a lot, I mean, I'm watching everybody. I'm watching the mayor, and I'm going, mayor, do I really want to be mayor? Do I want to go through all the, go to every single thing and cut the ribbons and kiss the babies and do all that stuff? You know, and that's what every council member does, right? So it's important. It's, it's called relationship. And that's what we need to do with our community, is build a relationship.
Councilmember Gonzalez, question?
Mr. Masonev, please share with us an example on how you might approach working with others effectively as a team, particularly when you might disagree with a colleague?
Well, that's important, to be able to work with somebody you don't always agree with. That's probably the hardest part of your job. I mean, I'm just guessing, okay? But working with each other, there's so many different personalities up here. I'm guessing you don't always agree with each other. And so being able to still have a relationship and talk with one another and be able to work through things. I mean, part, one of the things with politics is the art of compromise. I don't like the word compromise, but it's necessary sometimes. And so I think if you can communicate with one another and keep the lines open, that's how you work through, working with somebody with a disagreement. And everybody's opinion matters.
How do you think the city should address areas where the city is underfunded? For instance, our unfunded pension liability, our city services, and our aging infrastructure?
Oh my gosh, got about an hour? So the pension thing is a hot button. That's a real big issue. I don't, I totally understand people who work under a pension and work for a pension and deserve what they, what they were hired for to get that pension. I totally get that. But I believe the city needs to take a look at being outside of purse. That needs to go away because we can't afford it. It's getting more expensive. The state is throwing more on the city all the time. And it's just not something that is sustainable. Do something like a 401K where you do a matching fund. And then when that person leaves, they take it with them, and you never have to see them again. I don't mean that in a bad way, but you don't have to continue to fund their retirement. That's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval?
What do you see as the role of the city council? And what do you see as the role of the city staff?
Oh, that's a good question. We were just talking about that in the glass room over there. So from what I can tell, city council is, holds the purse strings. And the city is the ones that implement what the, what the council allows to have spent. Yeah, that's kind of, I've kind of got that, that's it.
Councilmember Rocha?
Welcome.
Thank you.
How have you remained current and informed on city issues? Give specific examples of your personal involvement.
Personal involvement? I'm here. That's an involvement. Repeat the question one more time.
Of course. How have you remained current and informed on city issues? Question mark.
Right.
Give specific examples of your personal involvement.
You know, there's, I do check this, the website from time to time, the, the city website. And I'm starting to read more about things the city is doing. There's also the local news. I wouldn't hold a lot in stock with that, but sometimes it, it whets the appetite to say, is this real, what's really going on? Let me take a deeper look. So I guess I'm self-educated in that way. I don't just sit around, if somebody has a complaint, I go, why do you think that way? And then I go and look it up and see if that's really the truth.
Thank you. That concludes our questions. We'll give you one minute for a closing statement to address the council.
Well, you know, there are 11 people here tonight. And I, looking at everybody on paper, and actually meeting them now, but looking at everybody, there isn't one person that wouldn't work well with the city council. They're all extremely qualified. In some ways, I almost feel like I'm at the bottom end of that, of that list. But if you want somebody who's willing to work hard and work alongside of you and do the best he can, I'm the guy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Masonev, we're going to put you front and center, right here.
Oh, over here.
Thank you, yeah. We've got an assigned seat and everything. And we have, I know, roll over, I'm crowded, right? And we have our next candidate coming in, Carrie Swenson. Hi, Ms. Swenson, how are you?
I'm well, thank you, how are you?
I'm very well, thank you. Ms. Swenson, just as a point of interest, on behalf of the council, we want to say thank you for stepping forward and your willingness to put your name in and application in as a District III appointee. And welcome. And we will give you three minutes for an opening statement, and then the council will have some questions for you.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, good evening, city council members, mayor, city staff, fellow applicants, and residents. It's an honor to be here today, seeking an opportunity to represent the amazing residents of District III. First, I want to thank the former city council member Steve McShane for his 14 years of service on city council. Anyone who chooses public service should be commended. I'll answer a little bit about my background education since council has my resume. I have a BA in education and a master's in history. I've owned Sylvan Learning in Salinas since 2009. And I've worked as an adjunct history instructor at Hartnell, both on the main campus and at CTF and Salinas Valley State Prison since 2021. I'm an educator who welcomes respectful challenges to my thought process and beliefs. We are dead if we do not learn and grow. I started volunteering in 2011, which made me truly call Salinas home. It has been the most giving and selfless residence that I've ever known. I'm proud to call Salinas home because I've been welcomed here by so many people. In 2011, I joined Steinbeck Rotary and served as president, president twice, and chaired our most successful fundraiser. In 2020, I joined the Board of Meals on Wheels of Salinas Valley and was board president for about two years during the pandemic. I also delivered meals during those two years. I have been on the boards for Seeds for STEM, a nonprofit that brings STEM programs to our youth. I joined Luluc Council 2055 and 2022 because of its focus on student scholarships. I was appointed to Measure G in 2023 and continue to serve. I was appointed to Monterey County Housing Authority Committee in 2023 and continue to serve there. From my work and community service experience, I will bring to city council a commitment. I will work with city council members, the mayor's staff, and the residents. Communication. I'm a good communicator who is not afraid to tackle hard issues. Transparency. I want my government to be transparent. Therefore, I promise to lead with, with integrity. Solutions to problems.[1683.46] Solutions to problems. I have learned from serving on Measure G and the hack. We will only accomplish fixing our streets and sidewalks, providing housing, creating accessible transportation, and address our water shortages only if we find solutions to our most pressing problems together. No one group can do it alone. I invite district residents to be a part of the solution. Serving on city council is not about me. It's about the residents and their needs. When I ran for Salinas City Council in 2022, I heard from hundreds of residents. They told me that they want their streets and sidewalks fixed. They want to live in a safe and affordable community. And they want government transparency. I timed that. Wow.
Thank you. Council has some questions. You'll have one minute to answer each question. We'll start to my right. Councilmember Asornio.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome. What have you done to prepare for the important role of city council member? Have you reviewed the city's budget, general plan, or participated in government?
So what I've done to prepare is, one, I ran for Salinas City Council in 2022. So a big part of my preparing was talking to residents. I really wasn't prepared until I went out and spoke to people and became aware of what their needs were. And that really shifted my thinking. It's about them, not about me. Yes, I read the budget over this past weekend. I have it printed out and have read it. And, you know, I've, I've been reviewing it. And what was the third part of your question?
Is it okay if I ask?
Yes.
Okay. Have you reviewed the city's budget, general plan, or participated in city government?
Well, I'm in Measure G, and then I'm on the Housing Advisory Committee for the county.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera, your question?
Swenson?
Thank you.
Ms. Swenson, serving on the city council is a significant time commitment. The public officials here often attend and participate in meetings and engage with constituents, as you have said, during business hours, evenings, and even on weekends. What is your approach to engaging with constituencies and balancing your commitments?
Right. Well, um, right now, with owning a business, Sylvan Learning, and working as adjunct professor at, or instructor at Hartnell, I'm used to working Monday through Sunday. The beauty of this job is I can get rid of Hartnell and replace that. And with Sylvan, I plan on bringing in a partner or an employee. So I have a lot of free time to be committed to the city and the residents. And I know how to communicate. If people message me, they will get a response back.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, your question?
Ms. Swenson, please share with us an example on how you approach working with others effectively as a team, particularly when you might disagree with a colleague?
Sure. Um, one, I think it's important to keep an open mind when, and not get fixated. And I can, I can give you an example. I brought something up to one of my students this week, and I had a fixed mindset. And he said, Ms. Swenson, you should look at it this way. And I stopped and I had an open mind, and I listened to what he said. And I said, you know what? You're right. I was looking at it one way, your example. You know, I didn't argue with him. I don't think it's good to argue. I think you need to stop, you know, mind, listen, and do your research. You know, do you understand the facts? I like to know what I'm talking about. I don't, I don't like to speak unless I know what it is I'm talking about.
How do you think the city should address areas where the city is underfunded? For instance, our unfunded pension liability, city services, and our aging infrastructure?
Right. That's a tough question. Um, you know, I was looking at, is there a way to, as pensions, you can't cut people's, that's already been promised to them. But we have to look at, in the future, how we can address it. As far as our roads and sidewalks, can we, is there grant money? Is there any money we can go after to get to try to fix that? And when we fix it, what is the most efficient, cost-effective, and also the most long-lasting, you know, work that will? I think we have to look into different materials, things that will, and we should look at other cities, other places, and find out what they've done that's worked. You know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval?
What do you see as the role of the city council? And what do you see as the role of the city staff?
Um, I mean, I see the role of city council. They're the ones who are the public face. They're the ones who are setting the policy and then making sure the public understands and being transparent with the, the residents, the people who voted them in. And I think the city staff, they're there to implement things and make things work, to make things, you know, what, what policy you laid out, that things are happening, that jobs are getting done.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rocha?
How have you remained current and informed on city issues? Give specific examples of your personal involvement.
I mean, so I know I've heard people say, I'm not coming to city council. I'm often on Zoom. I'm often at work watching on Zoom. And then I often go and watch, you know, if I miss something, I go and watch past city council meetings and make sure I know what happened. And to get involved, I mean, I'm just, what I read, I'm on Measure G, I'm on the housing. And I, I can tell you, with the Housing Advisory Committee, I've learned a lot. And one of the big things I learned was nothing's going to get done unless we work together. There are so many moving parts. We need housing. Homelessness is going to get worse if we don't get the housing. Housing's going to take a long time. This is not going to be a quick fix. So, you know, working in that, you know, you can't just bulldoze your way through and get something done all the time. You have to finesse it, and you have to be, and you have to be able to bring people together. And I think I do a really good job of that in my job and, you know, teaching.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes our questions. We'll give you one minute for a closing statement.
Thank you. All right. Change is hard and scary. District III has been represented by Steve McShane for 14 years. It's an adjustment for everyone, residents, city council members, and staff. Let's embrace a change and use this time of transition to work together. I urge the council staff and residents to be part of a positive change. We can all help lead Salinas in a direction that benefits everyone. There are solutions to our problems. Change will motivate us to find solutions and implement them. I humbly ask that you appoint me to Salinas City Council, District III. Keep in mind, I earned 3,000 of about 7,000 votes cast in 2022. Election for the Salinas City Council in District III. I am qualified and ready to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll have you take a seat, front and center, right here. And we are bringing in our next candidate, Christina Guerrero.
Hello.
First and foremost, Ms. Guerrero, thank you very much for being willing to step forward, put your application in, and your willingness to serve as the District III representative. On behalf of the city council, we just want to thank you for that. You will have three minutes of an opening statement, and then the council will have some questions for you.
Great.
Sound good?
Yes.
You're welcome to start.
All right. Thank you all so much for giving me the time to present to you. First, I'd like to start off. So, good evening, madam mayor and city council members. My name is Christina Guerrero, and I do live in District III over on Aspen Place and Woodside Drive. There are several things, I believe, need to be improved. However, for the sake of time, I'll present, you know, three important things, issues that I believe are important for District III. First off, there are limited options for families with young children in specifically South Salinas enrolling in extracurricular activities. I've met some of these families through my son's school, who do live in the district, and who have difficulty finding options in Salinas. So they do go out to either the peninsula or the Bay Area for these activities. And some of the programs do offer, you know, financial aid. So they do give options to families who don't have a lot of money to attend those programs. I also believe that some of these programs need to have more STEM-related activities for students, specifically young children in the South Salinas. Because, so some of these things that I propose, that we set up more extracurricular activities for them, besides the ones that we already have, like the YMCA and, you know, aerial theater, and, you know, I'm blanking on it, but. And also, some of the things that I think we should revamp is the Steinbeck Center that is in downtown Salinas. I know it was used for a certain period of time, you know, to bring people in. But since then, I, what I've seen is like not really too much activity. So just maybe bringing in like more, maybe museums to really emphasize Salinas. And that brings me to the other point of bringing tourism back into the city, especially in downtown, and especially since we revamped downtown. Like bringing in, you know, we brought in a lot of business. So just really emphasizing coming to Salinas and why it's so important for people to stop in Salinas, like on the way from my office places.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. The council has a series of questions, and you'll have one minute to answer each.
Okay.
We'll start to my right. Councilmember Asornio.
Madam mayor, and welcome.
Thank you.
What have you done to prepare for the important role of city council member? Have you reviewed the city's budget, general plan, or participated in city government?
I have been, well, first of all, I have presented to you guys before, back in like 2017 with, when I was with AmeriCorps, working for, I worked for the library for the city. So I did learn about those things in the libraries and cities. And also like, you know, the education aspect of it. I did do research. I also did, I'm going to say this, I did work for Steve McShane. But, I know, I know I shouldn't, I mean, I know this is a very sensitive subject, but I just want to like say that. But I mean, I'm not saying like, you know, I mean, that's what kind of got me like to like participate in like city council, and that's kind of what it got me into. I did, you know, get, yeah.
Thank you for your answer.
Yeah.
Councilmember Barrera?
Guerrero, welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Guerrero, serving on the city council is a significant time commitment. These council members often attend and participate in meetings and engage with constituents during business hours, evenings, and sometimes on weekends. Some of these people, every weekend. What is your approach to engaging with constituencies and balancing other commitments?
Well, I believe that definitely making time, especially to get to know neighbors, is definitely a priority. So I would definitely start like, obviously, where I live and like, you know, get to know. I mean, I do know my neighbors, but just get to broader area. And then just manage my time, because I mean, honestly, I do have a child, but he's in school. So like, you know, balancing that out, I mean, I've done like full-time in the past, and I've learned to balance things. So that's how I would do it, like just, you know, manage my time and just, you know, work evenings, work weekends, just to get to know the residents and, you know, learn about the issues that they have, which, and what's important to them, not only, you know, just in where I live, but, you know, the rest of District III, which is very important.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez, your question?
Yes, Ms. Guerrero, please share with us an example on how you approach working with others effectively as a team, particularly when you might disagree with a colleague?
I, well, I've worked, you know, with a lot of nonprofits, worked with a lot of people. So I worked in teams, of course. And so what I would do is, you know, you would listen to what people have to say first. You know, like give them the opportunity to share their, you know, their ideas and all this. And, you know, there will be disagreements, of course. But, you know, you learn to work through it. You learn to kind of, okay, I understand what you're saying, you know, and what you're proposing. Here are some other, you know, ideas. And, you know, see if we can kind of work together with both of our ideas or a team of ideas and see what we can do to, you know, come up with one solution that will work for everyone. Obviously, you know, not everything's going to work for everyone, but kind of think about, you know, what can work for the whole.
Ms. Guerrero, how do you think the city should address areas where the city is underfunded? For example, our unfunded pension liability, city services, and our aging infrastructure?
Well, I think that I didn't get to the whole roads part of my speech. But I definitely think like investing, you know, more in the infrastructure. And, I mean, the infrastructure is a big thing because the roads are very, you know, uneven and hard to drive on. And the sidewalks are very, you know, uneven to walk on. And I feel that they're, they are unsafe for people. I think just learning to budget and kind of like figure out, okay, this is kind of like, and lay out like a budget of how much each thing is going to be in detail and be like, okay, we have a specific budget. Let's try to stay within that. And if it goes over, then, you know, kind of figure out, okay, are there other options? That we can do?
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval, your question?
What do you see as the role of the city council? And what do you see as the role of the city staff?
Um, for our city council, I feel that it's our job to really listen to the public and feel that it's our job to listen to residents' issues and, you know, address those issues in a timely manner and not just, you know, say, well, we're going to look at it. But actually, like, you know, if there's a serious problem, you know, address it right away instead of having it being left, you know, for a long period of time or not being met. And then, you know, for our city staff, you know, just to kind of work with the city council and be like, you know, what are some things that the residents are having issues with? And what can we do? You know, how can we help the city council and be, you know, like budget-wise? Like what do, what do the residents need? You know, things like that.
Councilmember Rocha?
Welcome.
Thank you.
How have you remained current and informed on city issues? Give specific examples of your personal involvement.
Um, so city issues. Um, I mean, I have, well, I've lived here, born and raised. I did leave to go, you know, leave from school, to go to school. And then I came back because I wanted to give back to my community. I came back in to work with AmeriCorps around education, because I thought that, you know, if I can contribute in some way to, especially like the literacy portion of the city, I need to contribute in that way. And also, just as far as city issues, like, living in areas where, like, you know, it's unsafe for like either my older parents or my son. Those are the things.
That concludes our question portion of the interview.
Okay.
We're going to go ahead and give you one minute for a closing statement.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to keep this really brief because I know I, you guys have a lot of information, still have a lot of interviews. So what I believe is that these changes that I presented, I mean, that you've asked for me, would be beneficial for the growth and stability of District III. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have you take the last front row seat right here. Thank you very much. And we're going to go on to our next candidate, Bradley Clinton. Hi, welcome.
Hello. You already know my stance, so just throw the questions at me.
Well, I'm.
I'm serious. I don't need my three minutes.
I, no, and I appreciate that, but I do want to make sure that everybody has a fair and transparent process.
I'm being fair. I don't, I don't want my three minutes.
So with that, let me just give you your welcome statement in the acknowledgement that we recognize that it is courageous to step forward as a candidate for city council. And so on behalf of the council, we just want to say thank you for your willingness to serve. I'll give you three minutes. If you don't want to take the three minutes, you can.
Start the questions.
Okay. We'll go ahead and go on to our question portion. Councilmember Asornio, we'll give you one minute, Mr. Clinton, to answer each question.
Welcome, Mr. Clinton.
Oh, thank you.
What have you done to prepare for the important role of city council member? Have you received the city's budget, general plan, or participated in city government?
I've been to a lot of city council meetings. I would, I asked her for the, if whoever gets elected, I don't have anything about the budget. Today was the first time I even heard about the budget, that you're even doing it. So I asked her, whoever gets elected, you know, do they get that, do they get the information before the 11th? Because it says the 12th. It would be our first meeting, I thought. So before, before then, we need to, I mean, I tell you, I want the information to look at, to look at it, look at it.
Thank you.
Thank, you're welcome.
Councilmember Barrera, your question?
Clinton, welcome.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Clinton, as you know, serving on the city council is a significant time commitment.
Of course.
Public officials often attend and participate in meetings and engage with constituents during business hours, evenings, and sometimes on weekends. during business hours, evenings, and sometimes on weekends. What is your approach to engaging with constituents and balancing other commitments?
Anytime. I'm, I'm, I'm not married. I have no kids. I'm not working right now. So I could be here all night if you want. Or, or in the morning. I, I don't need any notice.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Clinton.
Councilmember Gonzalez, your question?
Thank you. Mr. Clinton, please share with us an example on how you approach working with others effectively as a team, particularly when you might disagree with a colleague?
I just, I'll try to convince them, or, or they can convince me that their point of view is better. I, I just want what's best, best for the city. I have no agenda and whatever's best for the city, the whole city, not just my district. If there's streets in, in another part of town that need it worse than District 3, then fix them. But only fix them to the point to where they're, to when they get the money, you could do it right. So what I've seen so far is, it's not even called, it's not even a Band-Aid. I could do better work than this, what they're doing. So as far as I'm concerned, they, they, they need to stop what they're doing and go back to school. And I, I'd like to, I'd like to figure, find out what their qualifications are to get this job because they, they don't know anything.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Clinton, how do you think the city should address areas where the city is underfunded? For instance, our unfunded pension liability, city services, and aging infrastructure?
Uh, I'd try just as, as best I can, where the needs at. Like, instance, like the homeless. I'll help the homeless, but they have to help themselves. You know, if they just go out there and sweep the city streets, I'm okay with that. But they can't just live in that encampment and keep it like a, like a slop. You know, to me, it should be perfect. Perfectly groomed. And if they don't care, why do they expect us to care? They, they need to work for what they, for what they get. You know, if they need a hand, give them a hand. But if they don't appreciate that hand, then you can't help somebody who doesn't want to be helped. And then wherever the need's at, I, I'd, I'd try to fix that need, whether it be the police, the homeless, or any other issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval?
What do you see as the role of the city council and what do you see as the role of the city staff?
From what I see, the city council needs to work together more. You know, you, you get an idea, which maybe Steve did, and he just got outvoted. So he, he maybe got tired of that. But I don't know. But I just think that everybody needs to be looking at what's best for the city, not what's best for their district or what's best for them. I'm just here because I care. I don't, I don't want to be a public service. I, I'll, I'll take it back to two terms. If I got elected, I'll do my two terms and I'll be done. And if I could help the city, I will. But it's going to have to come from everybody. Everybody has to get together and agree that there's a problem to fix a problem. Not one person can fix the problem. And I, I see that. And I've tried and I stopped doing service requests because they're not doing, they're not doing them. They need to fix, I don't even know the city has a tar truck. They need to fill the cracks right now. Fix the problem before it becomes a problem. And they haven't done one crack in any of my service requests in seven months. That's that I've been doing it. So, so who knows for how long they even let the streets rot, rot like this.
Councilmember Rocha?
How have you remained current and informed on city issues? Give specific examples of your personal involvement.
Um, I help my mother, she's a Rotarian, so she uses me as her labor. She's 85, so she can't do the functions. So I'll go out and I'll, and I, I've helped with the wine festival. I've helped with all kinds of the city functions. If someone asks me, oh, more than help, but I can't help if nobody asks me. And I'll volunteer if, if I know what to volunteer for. Because I believe in our city. And one day, I'd like to see, um, that, that Central Park, see that little, that little dolphin work.
The seal.
The seal. Because I remember that, those days and the days when the train, when the train was there. And I live right there, so I see what's going on. And I told you about how they're, just instead of fixing a curve, they took the curve because they're too lazy to drill it and put rebar in it. So that's what I'm saying. These guys need to be retrained or something. But they're not doing the job right. I wouldn't give them a penny. I, I do it myself before, before I let them do it.
Thank you. Mr. Clinton?
Yes.
That concludes our question portion. If you'd like to give a one-minute closing statement?
I know. I think I've said it all. Like I said, I'm, I'm doing this for the city. I'm not a, I'm a person, I don't volunteer, but if people ask me, I'll help. But doing this is way out of my comfort zone. Only do this now because I've gone to city council meetings, got used to talking. But I'm not, I'm not a politician whatsoever. And I'm not, I'm not going to take this anywhere but here. And I'll help as long as things get done. But if they don't get done, then the city's going to be on its own. Because I, I can't, I can't watch it anymore. Because it's, it's, I've never seen the city this bad. With the streets, people, what, what's going to bring people to Salinas? They, they could come here, they have to realign their car, and then they're, they're never coming back. Or what, or what kind of activities are here to bring, bring them in? There's nothing. Maybe bring a little theme park in. Like at Rona Park, they have a place called Scandia, has miniature golf, has real race cars, batting cage, you know, arcades, something to bring the, somebody to Salinas. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Clinton?
Yes?
You get a front row seat right here, um, with the rest of the candidates. Yep. It's a thing. If you'll look, if you'll, if you'll look, we got them all lined up here. So, yep. Welcome to the very open and transparent process. All right. And we're going to bring in our... Okay, we're going to, we're going to bring in our next candidate. We have Jesus Valenzuela here.
Oh, good.
Hi, Mr. Valenzuela, welcome.
Good evening, good evening.
We've got jokes today, so we appreciate your flexibility.
Of course.
Just a, a brief welcome. And on behalf of the city council, we want to say thank you for stepping forward with your willingness to serve as a District 3 city council member and your courage for coming forward and being willing to come down the gauntlet and answer questions. So...
Of course, of course. Hope you weren't a, hope you weren't a tough act to follow there.
With that, okay, with that, hang on, I need to maintain some level of decorum here. You'll have a three-minute opening statement and then the council will have some questions after that, okay?
Sounds good.
All right. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. First and foremost, I thank you for the opportunity to, to be here tonight. As you know, my name is Jesus Valenzuela. I am a resident here in the city of Salinas, District 3, obviously. And let me begin by saying that I have been working for over a decade to improve the lives of our residents here in Salinas. As a matter of fact, it was tonight, 10 years ago, 2014, that I was in the corner of Del Monte, helping to stop a massive protest from getting out of hand. And so it, it feels a little bit funny to me, right? Being there in 2014 on May 21st and being here tonight with my hopes of fulfilling an appointment for this, for the city council. As you know, I am a community organizer and currently I work for the city of Salida as a community engagement manager, a role that gives me a bird's eye view of how a city functions. So it is my intent tonight to detail how those two have helped me understand three key elements to how a city functions: residents, council, and staff. As a community organizer, I learned to build community power. I have had thousands of conversations with residents in Salinas. And one key component of being a community organizer is putting pressure on city council. We have won a lot of campaigns, but I've made a lot of mistakes, too. A central tactic, as I mentioned, is putting pressure on city council. But it wasn't until I started working in a city that I realized how important the staff is, how important it is for city council members and residents to respect the expertise of our staff members. And that is one of the key reasons why, why I want to be a city council member. We need a good city council that will support and trust our staff on the day-to-day work, to do the work that they have been doing for years and know how to do better than we do. And of course, our staff needs the support of our council, too. Because staff, they are the experts in their field. But it is not always the case that staff is an expert in the lived experiences of the residents. A big component of what I'm proposing, if appointed, is to host a series of civics academies to help bridge that gap between residents, our council members, and our staff. Together, we can work to address the most pressing needs such as implementing the general plan, the need to bring more housing, improving conditions of local streets, and bringing in new businesses, just to name a few. I hope that I have worked to convince you that I am the ideal candidate to represent District 3, and I will strive to keep our district as engaged as it has been.
Thank you. Um, we now will go to council member questions and we will give you one minute to answer each one. I'll start to my right. Councilmember Osornio.
Welcome.
Thank you.
What have you done to prepare for the important role of city council member? Have you reviewed the city's budget, general plan, or participated in city government?
Yes, sir. So I reviewed the, the general plan. As a matter of fact, before moving to the, the city, uh, before starting working for the city of Salida, I worked with Building Healthy Communities. And so we worked to get residents engaged in the general plan updates, in particular, the Alisa Vibrancy Plan. And so we have worked continuously with the budget. I keep an eye on the budget. It is one of those things that just is of interest to me. And of course, reading staff reports, right? I will admit, before working for the city of Salida, staff reports were a mystery to me, but I, I, I got them now, you know? So that is what I've been doing to prepare.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera?
Mr. Valenzuela, welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Valenzuela, serving on the city council is significant time commitment. These officials often attend and participate in meetings and engage with constituents during business hours, evenings, and a lot of times on weekends. What is your approach to engaging with constituents and balancing your time?
Yes, sir. So a key component that I plan to do if appointed is to take a community organizing approach. This is something that I saw Councilmember McShane do, which is going neighborhood by neighborhood, block by block, engaging residents, starting, you know, an email, text, uh, sign-up list, and really getting them to get engaged with the city. And so I can make the commitment, as I have done in the past, to, to meet with folks off-hours, you know, evenings, mornings, weekends. This district is heavily engaged and I appreciate that. And so I, I do acknowledge the great work that former Councilmember McShane did to build that. And I, I hope to continue that legacy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, question?
Mr. Valenzuela, please share with us an example on how you approach working with others effectively as a team, particularly when you might disagree with a colleague?
Sure thing. So, um, conflict resolution is something that I, I am no stranger to, especially in community organizing. Um, I, I got thrown into community organizing, well, I first started with the United Farm Workers Union organizing. But then community organizing in 2014, that was a hard time for our city. And so it is being able to navigate what people are saying, even when things get heated. It's also knowing how to synthesize information, right? Somebody can talk for 10 minutes at a time and they could have said one thing. Somebody could talk for one minute and say a lot of things, right? So it is that ability to hear people's perspective, to be able to handle that conflict. And more than anything, right, is to get everybody to know that we're not all going to agree all the time. That's one of the things about democracy is that even if you are on the losing side of a campaign, we still live here. It's still our city.
Thank you. Um, council member, or, excuse me, candidate, how do you think the city should address areas? It's, I'm the mayor, I get to run meetings all the time, so everybody's a council member. Um, how do you think the city should address areas where the city is underfunded? For instance, our unfunded pension liability, city services, or aging infrastructure?
Yes. So one of the, the things that I've been really embedded in now, with my recent line of work, is looking for applications for grants, right? Really working with grant writers. And also knowing that the city of Salinas, while it is a city, it can also work with our local senators, right, our assembly members, our congress members, to be able to find dollars, right, in other places. So I know that our city is facing, um, you know, potentially $20 million deficit, but now's the time to, to go, right, to, to meet with our legislators, apply for more grants. So that is the first approach I would take because more than anything, I want to support working families that work in our city and keep our city running. So cutting time is going to be the last option.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval?
What do you see as the role of the city council and what do you see as the role of the city staff?
The city council is there to keep their ears on the streets, to be able to meet with residents. Um, you know, uh, like I said, the city, you, the city council, you, you live here, you represent the community members here. Some staff, some live here, some don't, right? And like I said in my introduction, even though somebody might be an expert in how streets should be maintained, maybe they don't live on those streets. And so I believe that the city council should be the bridge between the community members, harnessing their lived experiences, training them, right, on how the city, how to navigate the city. And then the city staff is the one that executes those plans. So, um, you know, just to give a quick example, right, when I first started working as a community organizer, the first thing that we would, people would ask, answer when we asked them what they want the city to invest in, is schools. And so that means that we have to educate our community members as well on how we function.
Councilmember Rocha?
How have you remained current and informed on city issues? Give specific examples of your personal involvement.
Sure thing. So as a resident, obviously, I'm always keeping an eye on the agenda. So I'm constantly checking in to see if there are going to be matters that are of importance to, to me, right, in District 3, and always poring over the, those, uh, the staff reports. Um, and then I think the biggest document lately for me has been trying to decipher the housing element. Uh, that is one big document, right? And so trying to understand that the Alisa Vibrancy Plan, the Chinatown Revitalization Plan, and just the general plan in general, um, that's been what, what I've been doing. And of course, talking to my city council members.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, so that concludes our question portion of the interview. We'll give you one minute for a closing statement.
Sure thing. Like I said, I thank you so much for, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I know that y'all are in a very tough position. So my respects to you for, for doing what you do, you know? And just want to finish off by saying that, you know, my experience in a city as a community organizer, being able to communicate out to people what it is that we do, a lot of times folks get mad at city employees because honestly, as cities, we've got a lot of catching up to do and being able to explain ourselves the way a PR firm does, right? And so that's, that is the experience that I wish to bring as a city council member. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And we're going to put you front and center next to Brad there. It's a reserved seat. There you go. Don't mansplain. We've, we don't have the room. All right. Um, we're going to go on to our next, uh, next candidate. We have Karen Cameron up next. Hi, Ms. Cameron, how are you?
Good.
Good. Welcome. First and foremost, on behalf of the city council, I just want to say thank you for your courage and your willingness to step forward as a candidate for the District 3 appointment. We recognize it takes a lot of time and energy and effort and very much appreciate your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to let you open with a three-minute opening statement and then the council has some questions after that.
Thank you.
All right.
First, I want to give a disclaimer. I can't possibly walk in the shoes of Steve McShane, nor my mother, Marla's mayor, who gave 100% to this city as long as she could with too many volunteer contributions to possibly name. I understand that the role of a council member is to represent not only the constituents of their district, but all the citizens of the city. We should listen to the concerns of the people, advocate and vote on their behalf. They should be able to vote in the best interests of not only the district, but the entire city. I understand that in order for council meetings to function efficiently, all members of the council should agree to minimize comments, to save time. Brevity is key. Clarity paramount. TV news reporting taught me the need for confidentiality. The most important words are often no comment. So who am I? What do I bring to the table? I believe I have the education skills and character necessary for this job. I understand Robert's Rules of Orders, take effective notes while listening, have practice speaking within a limited timeframe. Plus, I've been told that I ask excellent questions. I, my past experiences include writing grants, managing programs, and publicly speaking and advocating. I have my master's degree in bilingual multicultural education. I retired from Alisa School District, where I spent two years teaching 5th grade at MLK in Sanborn, and seven years at Virginia Rocker Barton. And in those experiences... And in those experiences, I was in the homes of all my students and became quite familiar with the Alisal area. I now work with CSU MB as a clinical coach, supervising nine student teachers in three different school districts, and also teach part-time. Be willing to sacrifice the part-time after-school position to be available for you. So, some of my skills, I put 20 years into the private sector before putting 20 years into public education. That included not only TV news reporting, but managing different programs, case management. I spent a number of years as a J2PA Programs Coordinator and a WAA Case Manager, so I worked with troubled populations that were at risk. And I want to emphasize that one thing I bring is empathy. I have not always been a homeowner and investor. I have not always been retired. I've walked the shoes of someone who gets food stamps and HUD. I have been actually homeless before. I know what it feels like. I've worked in diverse populations and believe that I can bring a lot to the table. Some of that would include my initiative. When I became a TV news reporter, I went from unemployed to talking my way into an internship, to then reporting and finally producing for the station. So that showed initiative. I've taken organizations and built them ground up.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it. We're going to go on to questions from the council. You'll have one minute to respond to each question. I'll start to my right, Councilmember Osornio.
What have you done to prepare for the important role of city council member? Have you reviewed the city budget, general plan, or participated in city government?
Yes, not as much as I'd like because of my position where I'm teaching after-school and the timeframe of the city council meetings. But yes, I have been here. I was here for part of the meeting earlier and do have a copy of the budget in hand that I've reviewed. So I do feel it's important to stay on top of the documents that are publicly available, and I've done the best that I can to do so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera.
Ms. Cameron, welcome.
Thank you.
Serving on the city council is a significant time commitment. A city council member is often attending, participate, and engage with constituents during business hours, evenings, and also on weekends. What is your approach to engaging with constituents and balancing your other commitments?
Well, I've been selective in what I've taken on post-retirement. So my part-time job that I do with CSU MB is not only semester to semester, but it's primarily Monday through Thursday in the mornings, and I'm able to flex and schedule my own work. So I have some variance there that I could work with in terms of even Monday through Thursday morning availability. I'm willing to sacrifice my after-school job that I do now only two times a week, which probably would not be a conflict anyway, but I do think it's important to make yourself available. And obviously, by the 500 pages, I believe, you discussed earlier at the meeting that you had pre-read for this budget, it obviously takes a lot of homework time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, your question?
Ms. Cameron, please share with us an example on how you approach working with others effectively as a team, particularly when you might disagree with a colleague.
I think it's important to have experience with diverse populations, and I've been in a number of situations where I experienced diverse viewpoints and needed to be respectful to those. I have worked with multiple low-income populations throughout my education career. They were predominantly Mexican-American, Hispanic of origin. I also worked seven years with a school district that was 98% Native American. So I've had different experiences where I was in the minority, and I think it's good that it built empathy for me. So I think team-building, empathy exercises, and having a bit of grace for one another because we're humans with differences.
Ms. Cameron, how do you think the city should address areas where the city is underfunded? For instance, our unfunded pension liability, our city services, and our aging infrastructure?
Well, as much as possible. It'd be nice to bring new money into the city. So I am not familiar, as I should be, with the grants that you have now and what else could be available. There's always available grants that are not tapped into, so I'd like to assist with that. And business revenue, when we bring new businesses to the area, that brings taxation. So those would be a couple of things that would be real bonuses. Other than that, a lot of it is looking at how do we divide what we already have? So anything new would definitely be welcomed.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval, your question?
What do you see as the role of the city council, and what do you see as the role of the city staff?
I think I took part of my three minutes explaining that where I had other things to say, but I think part of it is to be a team, to understand that we're not here to waste anyone's time, not the public nor each other, and that there are important decisions to be made, that we need to be respectful to one another. I really want to see a couple of things come about, transparency in government so that trust can be rebuilt, because I feel like a public image has been damaged. I'd also like to see a youth advisory council. I don't know if that's already in place, but I would like to see the youth trained to be able to use their two minutes effectively, and I think that that's a challenge for most people. Two minutes goes like that, and in many of these places, they're taking three minutes down to two minutes, down to one minute. And how do they express their viewpoint and get their voices heard? I'd also like to see
[beep].
Just as I already stated, more public involvement, and I think perhaps we should explore a different timeframe for public comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Rocha?
How have you remained current and informed on city issues? Give specific examples of your personal involvement.
Well, one, one small thing that I can think of recently is I have a concern for the libraries that came from my mother. And I know Cesar Chavez Library was near and dear to her heart. It disturbs me that their sign has fallen down, so I went in to inquire what it would take to replace that sign. They did mention to me that it would cost about $8,000, and for one reason or another, it hasn't been a priority. So we had a discussion about possibly, they're looking at bringing in some artists from the area to contribute to the sign, but I know my mom would want pride in that, so it's just one small example. I think just being involved, caring enough to be here and wanting to learn more and to research more, being willing to make that commitment to be a better citizen and to try to involve more people in that process. There's just a lot of things that need to be done in our city.
Thank you, Ms. Cameron. That concludes our question and answer period. We will give you one minute for a closing statement.
Has it begun? Well, we live in a time of social media, and I just hope that trust can be rebuilt because there's been some very negative things said about the council, and I really want to have a better, a better image for our city. Our city motto is "rich in land, rich in values," yet sometimes I question whose land and whose values? Who is unheard? Who is forgotten in this city? Some of my experiences have built a real empathy for those that do not have, and we need to be their voice. We're counting on each of you to make a cohesive city for everyone, and I count that soul that's homeless as valuable as one that invests in the city. So what can we do to bring things together and create a team that will effectively, effectively make changes in this city? I'd like to be a part of that.
Thank you. We're going to have you sit down. Actually, we're going to have the front row move over one seat, and we're going to have you sit next to Mr. Valenzuela. And we have one more interviewee. Thank you all for your patience. We'll go ahead and bring in Eloise Shim. Hi, welcome. Ms. Shim, first and foremost, just an acknowledgement, we recognize that it's courageous and very admirable to step forward with your willingness to serve for District Three. So on behalf of the council, we just want to say thank you for putting your name forward as a potential, as a potential council member for the third district.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And with that, we'll go ahead and put a three-minute clock. You have three minutes for an opening statement. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. So good evening, city council, and mayor, and city attorney, and city manager. My name is Eloise Shim, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to apply for this, this District Three position. And a little bit about myself, a little bit about my background, I've lived here in District Three going on three years now, no, two years now, and, but I am a native Californian, and I've lived in Salinas at other times, and I lived in District Four for about three years, and I've worked in Salinas as a computer operations, a computer teacher, and also I have a degree from the University of California, Santa Cruz. And so the most of my life, I've lived on the Monterey County, and now I'm happy to be in District Three. And some of the priorities that I have for the position would be that there should be transparency and accountability with the council, because sometimes I've seen that constituents don't feel as if they're being heard, and I don't think that's the fault of the council. I just feel as if it's a complicated process, the systems and the processes of the city, and it has to be simplified so that people that come to, that come to talk, like myself, I come to just about every city council meeting, and I have for the last two years. I also go to the Board of Supervisors meetings. Another thing that I would say is a priority is that I think that there should be guidelines for the budget. I think the, the city is very forthright and forthcoming about the budget to the public, but I think that it's, there should also be realistic fiscal responsibility in terms of you want to keep the city solvent, but also have, address the pressing issues like affordable housing and homelessness and high educational values, high educational standards. And one of my sort of pet issues and topics is historic preservation, which I did become the Historic Preservation, Historic Resources Board Member, and the city was very generous with me in terms of giving me [beep]. Really? Is it three minutes already?
You can go ahead and finish your
Oh, my gosh, I just got started. Come on now.
Welcome to city council, right? You may go ahead and finish your sentence if you, I'll allow you to finish the sentence, but then we'll need to go on to questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I felt that the city has been very generous in terms of giving me training. As I was on the board, they gave me training in ethics and the Brown Act and, 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 and ordinances about the historic resources here in
There we go. Thank you.
In Salinas.
Perfect. Okay. I just want to make sure I'm fair with everyone. All right, we have a series of questions. Each council member will ask you a question. You have one minute to respond. We'll start to my right, Councilmember Osornio.
Welcome.
Thank you.
What have you done to prepare for the important role of city council member? Have you reviewed the city's budget, general plan, or participated in city government?
Well, I, as I said, I do come, since day one when I moved to District Three, I do come to every single city council meeting, and I listen very carefully to the budget. I know the first year that I was here, they had a lot of participation, which I thought was good from the public, about the budget. And, but one thing that I was surprised about is that public safety took the lion's share of the budget, and I thought, there isn't that much left for all the other things, you know? It's important that public safety, the police, and the fire should be properly compensated and, but also I think that the police should, should have the proper training and be paid properly, but also every year, I think that people should be able to see that the crime is reduced
Thank you.
With our efforts.
Councilmember Barrera?
Ms. Shim, welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Shim, serving on this council is a significant time commitment. These council members and mayor often attend and participate in meetings and engage with constituents during business hours, evening hours, and sometimes even on weekends. What is your approach to engage with constituents and balancing other commitments?
Well, I'm very open to listening to the constituents. I think it's really important that the, that as a councilperson, I would listen to what their concerns are, what their complaints are, and what they want, and that they understand how the, the city council and how the city operates. So I would be, I'm a very social person. I like to engage with people. I like to hear what their lifestyle is, what they, you know, what their hopes and dreams are and goals, how they envision Salinas. So that's how I would approach it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, your question?
Shim, please share with us an example on how you approach working with others effectively as a team, particularly when you might disagree with a colleague.
So, well, usually I am very open to different kinds of personalities on teams. Since I've been working in the, with the Historic Preservation Board, there are a lot of different personalities, but I enjoy that. And actually, I would vow as, as, as the representative for District Three, that I would be very adaptable, because in District Three, there's a certain culture, but in the other districts, there are different ethnicities, and I would be adaptable and open to learning about other ethnicities and cultures.
How do you think the city should address areas where the city is underfunded? For instance, our unfunded pension liability, our city services, and our aging infrastructure?
Well, it's a problem that, you know, I did hear at the one meeting, at the one budget meeting, that there is a deficit in the city, and it's concerning. There doesn't seem to be a lot, enough money to go around, and I worry about that because, you know, there was so much funding from the ARPA. I especially worry about things like the fair distribution, the fair and even distribution among groups. Some, I don't think that groups, one group should get all the money, or one district, but that it should be equally distributed for people who are less fortunate. I worry about the homeless. I don't think they get their fair share of the monies, and, you know, it has to be, it just has to be distributed more fairly, in my opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval, your question?
What do you see as the role of the city council? What do you see as the role of the city staff?
Well, I think the city council is, is here to really listen to the constituents and not to have your own personal agenda or opinions, but to listen to the, the majority of not only the people in your district, but of the, of the entire city. And this And this city is very vocal. A lot of people do come and they state their concerns. And I think it's really important that, you know, they feel as if they're being heard and that there are solution-based actions that are taken and not just kind of like lip service, or, yeah, you have a right to your First Amendment, but, you know, we're just going to do what we want. I really think that a city council should put into action what the public wants.
Councilmember Rocha.
How have you remained current and informed on city issues? Give specific examples of your personal involvement.
Okay, so, well, again, I do come to all the city council meetings, and I read the agendas before I come so that I can be vocal about certain kinds of issues. Like, for me, I've been vocal about controversial issues like cannabis, like, what other things? Cannabis is the first one that comes to mind, but also crime in the city. I've been vocal about that, about traffic. So, you know, I prepare by seeing what's on the agenda and then stepping up and voicing what I think should be done if I see. Like, I think there should be some kind of thing for drug addiction and for reducing crime in the city. And I don't want Salinas to have a reputation of being a gang place, or a place where it's inevitable that there will be corruption.
Thank you. That concludes our question and answer. Not yet, hang on. We're going to give you one more minute to give a closing statement. So, that concludes our question and answer.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, I get one minute. Okay, so, well, I just want to say that if you do choose to select me as a representative for District Three, I'd be very happy, and I'd work very hard for the city and for the constituents. And I have been a volunteer since I've been here. I've gone to the, well, I'm on the Historic Resources Board. I'm in the process of kind of starting Something for Youth and Art program, and I've gone to two seasons of the clothing giveaway at Northridge. And I've been to all of the historic venues here in District Three and elsewhere, and I go to the parades. I'm engaged with the public. I go to the parades. I go to the performances at Hartnell, just to kind of see, you know, get a pulse of what Salinas is about.
Thank you. All right, with that, we're going to have you sit front and center, right here.
Oh, front and center.
Yep, along with all the other candidates. And now, we've concluded the interview portion of this evening's topic. We're going to go to public comment. So, I'll go ahead and open the microphone. We are doing a minute and a half to stay consistent with the rest of the meeting. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, city attorney, and city manager. Montevia Community, Jose Guerra. I like to say it takes a lot of guts to come up here and do this. I do it every week, I know. And it's hard to advocate for other people who can't be here, so that's going to be your job. Sorry, turn around, look at him, I apologize. But remember, you're going to represent these fine people in here. So, if you do get the job, do it diligently, and please be fair. Work with all these people. They work hard up here. I'm not saying they don't work hard. I mean, I don't know what you guys really do. No disrespect, I mean, I'm not a councilmember. But I know you guys work hard. I mean, you have to. You have to work hard to come together and make good decisions for everybody. That's very hard to do, I know. I mean, you've been in our meeting, Mr. Pia, Tony, you've been in our meeting. It gets rough, but you have to take charge. That's number one, take charge. You guys are in charge. Do your due diligence, and please, do the right thing, help each other, work together. Let's make this beautiful Salinas beautiful again. It's been beautiful a long time. I lived here all my life. I love it. I'm never leaving. They're going to bury me here. Thank you, guys. Have a great day, and thank you all for doing your duty. And all you guys that came to my meeting yesterday, thank you. Tony, Mr. Pia, Mr. Cohen, and Mr. Rojas, I believe, was there too, and a lot of people.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Well, thank you so much, Mayor, councilmembers, and staff. My name is Dr. Laura Solorio, and I have been resident of Salinas since 1986. I was born and raised in the neighboring county of San Benito, where my father was mayor and on the Board of Supervisors, so I totally respect all of the work that you do. I also really have to hand it to all these people who came out and worked so hard to make the application and to come here today. But I am here today to support Carrie Swenson for City Councilmember of District Three. I have supported Carrie in her previous campaigns and have campaigned in the district, walking door-to-door, talking to voters. I feel she will represent the district with intelligence and respect for others. She has been involved in city issues and will carry out her duties as a councilmember with honesty and openness. Because I have worked on her campaign, I know her personally, and I just recommend her very highly. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is Laura Saavedra, and I had the pleasure of presenting in front of you last year. It was regarding the farmer's market. And when I found out that Joel Panzer was running for District Three, which is my district, I was thrilled. And the reason why is I moved here from Los Angeles almost three years ago, and I've seen the development of things that have fallen under Joel's responsibility, such as the farmer's market and the Salinas Wine Festival. And the farmer's market, I'm a people watcher, and one of the things that I've seen and I'm really proud of is the fact that everybody comes together, and I don't know if it's Joel's calming way of bringing people together, and it's not just his own staff, it's the vendors as well. Everybody wants to make it work, and they do. And the crowd that shows up is really happy to be there, and it's families. And I love seeing the smiles on everybody's faces, and everybody's really happy. And I think what Joel can bring to the community and to the council is the voice of the people, because he's out there talking, and no disrespect to you, Mayor, he's the mayor of the farmer's market with his dog Piper, and he's always talking to everybody. So, thank you for your time.
No disrespect taken, thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening. I want to first start off by saying that tonight is a special night for District Three. Although I do not live in that district, I would like to remind those that are here on Zoom and on YouTube that Steve McShane failed you all from resigning in the middle of his term, which was a selfish move. That night on Zoom, I expressed how Carrie Swenson would have been the ideal person since she ran against McShane. She canvassed and spoke with the residents in that district and put in the work, which nobody here today, with all due respect, has. Yet, because one resident did not like that Carrie offered herself to fill that position on April 23rd, a woman, her husband who applied for this seat aggressively and verbally attacked Carrie right outside the rotunda that night on the 23rd. Had it not been for the woman's friend that pulled her back, who knows what that woman would have done to Carrie? Yet, that woman's husband is still applied for District Three seat. Carrie has also been accused of having backyard conversations. Yet, who are the ones having them? To me, it would have been the ones that came in with posters and an aggressive agenda, which was very adamant on April 23rd. McShane made a racial comment about certain districts.
Thank you.
Thank you. But you all asked if like that district.
Hi, welcome.
My name is Laurie Gerledy, and I live in District Three. And I've just been so impressed and just happy to see the people who applied tonight. It's just been amazing, you know, to see the experience and commitment that all these people have. But nevertheless, I am here to show my support for Carrie Swenson as well, who I first met during her campaign in 2022. At that time, she was walking door-to-door in my neighborhood, and I appreciated her level of experience as a small business owner, educator, and also her broad range of experiences working in the community. I believed that her energy and positive attitude would make her a great asset to the city council. She put a sign in my yard, and I voted for her. She didn't win, but she did receive 43% of the vote, which I think is quite an accomplishment. And now that there's a need to appoint an individual to fill that very seat on the council, I feel like she would present a person who would help with the smoothest transition for the next six months, and after that, who knows what will happen? But anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, council. My name is Roberto Chavez. I lived my whole life in Salinas. I'm here to support Dr. Juan Chavez. I've seen his leadership throughout the years. He's a great candidate, great to communicate to, good motivation for everybody. And you guys have a rare gem, because when I went to see his graduation, they mentioned the United States population, 2% have their doctor's degree, and he's a really knowledgeable person, great to communicate with. Everybody loves him, and I'm here to support him. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. So, let me just go real quick here. So, I reviewed attachment for the 51 pages for the 11 people, and it's great that you guys all want to do public service. But it's clearly to me that there's one candidate that sticks out. But I wanted to also make note of Cameron Chavez, Fong, and McNulty, and I see promise with you. But overall, Ms. Swenson, I mean, the will of the people. You guys are all here by election or at will, and there's all these people that voted for her, and I think for the rest of the term at least, it makes really good sense to me that she gets appointed there. You know, because when you look at that split from the last election, you know, it was a pretty good split. It was only like 1/10th of a percent from your split, but it's still the will of the people for that district, right? So, I'm glad that they addressed this thing of the smooth transition that was in that attachment one, which you guys had to put up with. I was here for that one meeting with all the people with the signs. That wasn't quite smooth, but this is really well done, so good job. Okay, thank you.
I don't promise to bat a thousand, so. Trying to stay consistent with running a meeting, I don't always know what the people will do. So, with that, welcome.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marsha Peoples, and I've been a part of this community almost 50 years. I worked many years for the city of Salinas Parks and Recreation. Jim and I were in our 20s, leave it at that. Under Mamie. And I've seen people come and go in this community. One person I'd like to say would be the best for this position is Ms. Karen Cameron. She is very professional at grant writing. She works with one of the biggest mega churches on the Monterey Peninsula. I've worked along with her with many city officials, Leon Panetta, Gunter. When Mayor Gunter came in, I was one of the first ones to invite him to an event that I had to organize for Hartnell College. I worked as an early childhood educator there for almost 15 years. Ms. Karen would be very instrumental in grant writing, helping the city with finance. We need some new blood. We need somebody that's very efficient with diversity. We need a lot of diversity here in our community, and people who can go in and out of all ethnicities of people. And I believe that Ms. Karen Cameron would be the one to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
This is my first time in front of the city council. I read about you guys all the time. I'm here for a friend. I've known him for quite a bit now. His experience of what he's done has actually got me to come out here. You know, I'm a resident of the District Three. I was able to afford a home back in 2018. Maybe I can't afford it anymore, but I do now. He has this vibrancy. He's done stuff for the city, currently works for the city of Solad, and I know he's got a lot of great ideas. We need someone for the long term, you know? As I look around in my neighborhood, everybody's moving away. Every time I walk my dog, you'll see me, have a little gray poodle, there's homes for sale. And the people that leave, you know, they're just either moving to a different area or just can't afford it anymore. And I know that he, working with the city of Solad, is making that city a little bit more vibrant. Originally, I'm from Solad, so I've seen it grow exponentially. So, my feeling is he'd be a great candidate for this job. Thank you.
I'm going to give you the opportunity to say his name.
Jesus Valenzuela.
Okay, great. That's all.
I see him all the time.
You have a few extra seconds? I thought I'd give you that opportunity, so.
Well, you're very gracious. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Remember, Jesus Valenzuela.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes, o buenas noches, pero alguien me va a tener que traducir porque...
Uno momento para traducción?
Sí.
Gracias.
Okay. Buenas noches, mi nombre es María González, pero Tony me conoce como Frias. Este, yo vivo aquí en Salinas desde el año 70. He's sido voluntaria en campañas desde que Simón Salinas era maestro y corrió para concejar. Entonces, he corrido voluntaria por muchos concejales y alcaldes, ¿verdad? Entonces, yo estoy aquí porque necesitamos que los concejales se pongan a trabajar en los tiempos de antes, que trabajaban en las comunidades, limpiezas comunidades, dándole horas a los jóvenes de las escuelas, de las high school. Entonces, yo conozco al señor doctor Chavez, Juan Chavez, desde que tenía tres años. Entonces, este, necesitamos a concejales que trabajen con la comunidad. No, nada más porque yo vivo en el este de Salinas, y el concejal vive en el otro condado o en la ciudad, ¿verdad? Este, hay que trabajar juntos, no nada más estar criticando a uno y a otro. Este, todos, Tony, siempre le hemos pedido ayuda, y aunque ahí está, lo estamos puchando, ¿verdad? Pero, este, yo es lo que pido, que son 11, y va a ser uno que va a ocupar la silla. Entonces, ahí deben de enfocarse ustedes, quien de veras está hablando con, no nada más leyendo aquí, sino lo que traemos aquí y de lo que estamos alrededor de las comunidades. Gracias.
My name is María González, but Tony knows me as Mrs. Frias. And I've lived here for 70 years. I have been volunteer, helping the city council since Simón Salinas was a council member. I've always been a volunteer, and I've worked with a lot of council members. I'm here because I know Jose Chavez since he was three years old, and we need a community, and we need a council member like him, somebody that really is going to work for the community, not because he's from the east and I'm from the other side of the city. We're not going to work together. We need council members that really go out and work and clean and give our high school kids hours so they can clean the city, and not being criticizing one and another. Well, I always talk with Tony, and I ask for help, and, you know, I'm pushing him and pushing him, and, well, he does help. And it's 11 candidates here, and just one is going to be able to take that chair. So, I really ask the council members to focus, who is the one that's speaking with their heart, and is not only here reading, but really is speaking with the heart and really means what he's saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, welcome. My name is John Silver, Dr. John Silver. I've been a resident of District Three. I've been a resident of District Three for approximately 20 years. I've been an employee, healthcare provider in Salinas for almost 40 years now. I've had the pleasure of having worked with several of you before on various projects. I think that we have a good City Council. I'm very proud of our City Council compared to what I've seen over the years. So good job. We also have a great group of candidates applying for this appointment. This is a really solid group. They're all, I applaud all of you, excellent people. I think one candidate stands out in particular on basis of her character, her proven empathy, her business acumen. These are all things that the City Council needs at this time for the various reasons we've heard tonight. And finally, I think a powerful piece of why Carrie Swenson should be our District Three representative is she got 45, almost 45% of the vote on the last election in 2022. And that says a lot about her respect and her connections to District Three. So please consider well. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, good evening. My name's Ernesto González, and I'm here to support Juan Chavez, now Dr. Juan Chavez. Kind of reminds me of me, starting from the very bottom, from the, he grew up in the east side behind Sherwood School. And so I was a principal at Sherwood Elementary, and he was one of my students there. Always a very good student, obviously from the leadership of his mother, Mrs. Ali Chavez. And so Dr. Juan Chavez moved on and graduated, went on to college, became a teacher, and has worked in after-school programs. And he's always been very respectful and hard worker, gets along well with people. And so I do encourage the council to look at Dr. Juan Chavez, and he has my full support. I know he's one of my former students and has done a great job. Congratulations, Dr. Juan Chavez.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, good evening. So if I sound a little nervous, it's because I wasn't really prepared to speak. But I had to come up and say a few words because one of the candidates forgot to say a few things about himself. First of all, my name is Jorge Valenzuela, and yes, Jesús Valenzuela is my brother. But I mean, this is a young man who has dedicated his entire studies, his entire career, to really helping people, understanding the community, understanding how government works, understanding where the negotiations are going, how to come to an agreement with different perspectives, with different community members, with different people throughout, you know, throughout the community. And I think that's something that we really, you know, I really see in a lot of you who are up there. And I think that's something that we really need for our district as well. I'm also, I also live here in District Three. And one thing he forgot to mention as well is that it's his birthday today. So happy birthday to my brother. But I think he is the best candidate for this position, and I think he has the knowledge. I think he has the experience, and I think he has the heart. So it's that heart, that brain, and that ambition connected that makes him the best candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Victor Cervantes. As most of you guys already know that. But I'm just here to voice my opinion. And, you know, first of all, I mean, thank you guys for taking the time of doing this. And I know this is not an easy task. All I ask is when you're doing your consideration for the temporary, you know, District Three Council, you know, it is great that you look at the person that is coming in to fill the seat. But one of the things that I would add to it is too, is when you look at that, is also look who's behind him, who's behind that person and who's around it. A lot of time, that tells you a lot about a person. We want somebody that wants what's best for the city. Okay, we want somebody that wants what's best for the community overall, you know? We don't need somebody else with, you know, a hidden agenda. I think that's the last thing we need. So I think you guys have your work cut out. And, you know, a little bit of McShane, I know everybody said some good things about McShane, somebody said some bad things about McShane. But, you know, nobody really knows the reason why he did what he did. Only he knows that. But I guarantee you guys, if you guys were in his shoes, he would do the same thing. So who are we to judge? So thank you guys, and, you know, appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So I'm glad everyone got along and behaved tonight. And as a member of the public, I have to say that it feels disrespectful to me as a member when I sit here and I see the City Council act out, and it's disrespectful to you, Mayor. So it offends me because my time's important. And when I see misbehaving, as I guess I will say, it's disrespectful. And so I just want to bring that up. But I hope whoever takes that seat behaves. So that's one thing I'd like to say. I think the candidates were impressive. I've worked alongside Joe Panzer for a lot of years. He's pretty impressive. I haven't had that opportunity. I know Carrie, too. Hi, Carrie. But I have worked alongside Joe, Joel Panzer, sorry, for a lot of years in Rotary. So, you know, I will. I'm disappointed that nobody, I hear about how much y'all care about the city, but none of you were at the meeting last night talking about rent control with the farm workers. Nobody. It's pretty sad. It was a pretty emotional-packed meeting about, talking about rent control. And I didn't see a council member there. So it's pretty sad. So I hope the next person who takes that seat will show up at a meeting that's that big of a deal, talking about housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Chris Barrera, resident of District Three. What an exciting moment for District Three. It has been 14 years since we've had a new City Council member. It seems like you have a large and good pool to choose from, and I have greatly enjoyed this process this evening. In my opinion, the choice is simple, Carrie Swenson. Carrie was the only one who ran against Steve McShane, and she did quite well with almost 45% of the total vote. That's a large amount and a whole lot of votes. I would say District Three has already spoken, and it should be the next person up. Carrie is a proven leader, educator, and advocate for all and for children. She knows how to get the job done and not afraid to ask the difficult questions. She has a big heart and will do the hard work. I truly hope she gets appointed today to represent District Three. Carrie Swenson is a fine example of service above self. Good luck with your vote tonight, and it will be nice to move on and continue the great work that all of you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
I'm Mary Ann Warden. I don't live in District Three, but I know a couple of people that are there. But I'm here because my, I'm about, I'm like ready to explode, not explode with happiness, because you hear about planting a seed and watering it, and it'll grow. That young man, I knew him as a baby. Last time I saw him, he was just starting to teach school at Los Padres when my husband and I was playing Santa Claus. I've watched it. His mom couldn't speak a word of English, neither of these kids, and she went back to school to learn how to speak and is now community leader in her area for the city. And her son, these little boys were so shy. My daughter-in-law, was, is their cousins, so I'm really proud because I encouraged their mom to teach them to read and gave them books and to learn English. I says, it's very important to learn your English. So I'm really proud of these boys. But I know Karen, her mom, lived down here just like me and Gloria. She was here for all the meetings, no matter what meeting it was, on her bicycle. So anyway, I'm just busting with happiness to see these people here that have really loved the city to come and do this.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
If Mary Ann thinks Marla's lived here, who was living at 35 Santa Monica Court? Name is Eric Peterson. And what Chris said was so good, so I'm not going to try to repeat it and just endorse what Chris said about Carrie Swenson. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and Council. Pardon my lack of fashion tonight. I just was watching online and couldn't help but had to come on down and give my two cents. I certainly don't envy you. You have a tough decision to make. You have a handful of amazing candidates. They all have strengths and are leaders in their own right. I did read up on them, and they're all very great candidates. There's one that does stand out to me, and that's why I had to come and share what I thought. Jesús Valenzuela is a young man who definitely has taken the time to invest his energy and has been so dedicated in getting to know the Salinas community. He's not originally from here. I usually tend to cheer on the native of Salinas, but that's my own bias. But he has definitely paid his dues and has given so much to our community. He understands what community means and what it can be. And he certainly has dedicated a lot of his professional experience to uplifting communities that have been historically marginalized. And he definitely understands what it means to operate in an equitable way that would better serve all members of a community. And I think that's a lens that you really need in City Council to be able to support a lot of the work that you're already doing and bring that balance to your perspectives as well. So Jesús Valenzuela, don't forget that name.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is Bill Cunningham. I'm in District Four. But I have a friend of mine, Dave Masonov, that's running for District Three Supervisor and, or council member, sorry. And I just want to endorse him as a friend, as a leader. He has a heart for the city, and I hope you give him his consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay.
It's a community meeting.
Yes. Este, mi nombre es, soy la señora Ali Chavez. Por 24 años trabajo para Salinas City District General. Y bueno, quiero hablar en español porque me gusta hablar tanto que quiero ser más clara, sí? Gracias porque usted no me ha apoyado con gente de mi escuela para la comunidad, los padres, bien bonito. Ah, yo como mamá les voy a decir cómo me siento. Me siento muy orgullosa. Conozco a varios de ustedes. Me siento muy orgullosa, muy feliz de estar aquí en esta sala. Cuando mi hijo recibió su primer título de ingeniero en agricultura, dije, oh, gracias, Cal Poly. Pero él siguió y siguió, y ahora que terminó su doctorado, Dr. Chavez, pues digo, valió la pena trabajar. Y sigo trabajando desde Millana Caballero. Él ponía los papelitos en las puertas, sí? Entonces, todo es un proceso. Eso quiere decir que los niños aprenden lo que miran, mirando, escuchando, saboreando por los sentidos. Entonces, aquí estamos para apoyar y querer mucho a la comunidad, entregarse como ahí mira un señor que ya tiene su fuerza, sus años, sus días. La credibilidad de la comunidad es tan importante, es tan importante. Kimberly, ay, mira, ahí va, tan linda. Yo digo, oh, pero, porque ya sabemos quién es nuestra alcaldesa, ya sabemos quién es todos ustedes, yo los conozco sin mirarlos. Ah, pero gracias por darle la oportunidad a todas estas jóvenes. Gracias, gracias. La palabra gracias quiere decir mucho. Gracias.
Good afternoon to everyone. My name is Ali Chavez, and I've been, I worked 24 years in the city district. Thank you for all the support that you gave me, council members, parents. I am a very, very proud mother. When my son graduated as an agriculture engineer at Cal Poly, I said, well, thank you, great. I was so proud, Dr. Chavez. But he continued. He got his master's. So I really think that all his effort was worthwhile. And children learn what they see. Like when we was doing campaign for Millana Caballero, he was the one that was putting all the little papers. And the thing is that children learn what they see through their senses. They learn support, love for their community, and this is very important. Like I see you guys, all of you. I see Mayor Kimberly, always so nice, and all the other council members. I know you all, and you're all good people. So really, thank you. Thank you for giving the opportunity to all these youth to be able to be here. I see somebody in the council also that he's there, he's still working. He has his years, but he's still there and he's still working. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you, and again, thank you.
All right. With that, I don't see anyone else for public comment in the chambers. We'll go to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment? Oh, that's okay. That's all right. I will hold on Zoom. Sorry for all the folks on Zoom. Just give me one more public comment in the chambers. Welcome.
I apologize to Zoom, too.
90 seconds. Go ahead.
So Mayor and council members, thank you very much. I would like to say that I appreciate the process that you are taking right now, and I support the process that you took in the past and the decision that you made because it was the most pragmatic and quite, really the best for all the city of Salinas, just and move forward, which is why I'm here today. Because especially after listening to all the candidates and having followed meetings on Zoom, and I really think that right now, going forward, I'm here to support Carrie Swenson. And my number one reason is she's already run for it. I know that she's run for it, and it takes a lot of work, as you all know, to go out there and knock on the doors of your neighbors, take the time. You don't know what the person on the other side, if they're going to slam the door in your face or they're going to say thank you very much, you never know. But it takes a lot of courage and determination, and it also shows that that person is committed to the city. They're committed to working with all of you, and especially when they have the skill. You've seen her resume. I've heard her here tonight, as everyone else is, and she had nothing but positive things to say about the vacating council member. So, and I wish him well, but I also wish the city well. So imagine you're on a mission to Mars, and you're going to have to be on that mission to Mars for a while. Are you going to take somebody who's got the tools, who's somebody who can collaborate, somebody who can fill in when somebody else is down? Or are you going to take the person who opens the door and sabotages the mission, as some have done already? So anyway, I wish you all the best, and I'm here to support Carrie Swenson, so thank you very much.
All right, we'll go to Zoom. Thank you for your patience for the members on Zoom. We are going to go ahead and start. We have Monica Andrade on the line. You have a minute and 30 seconds. You may unmute yourself. Welcome. Monica, you're up. You can unmute yourself. All right, I'm going to go ahead and we'll leave Monica on there. Oh, did we get Monica? Nope. Okay. We'll go on to the next one, Amy Salmina. You have a minute and 30 seconds.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. Thank you so much for taking the time this evening, as it's a very long evening, and hearing all the wonderful resumes of people who are interested in help running District Three. I'm a lifelong resident of Salinas, actually, fourth-generation lifelong resident of Salinas. Have a thriving business down in South Salinas, along with my husband and many business owners down there. And I just wanted to go ahead and comment and give my personal opinion on somebody I've had the opportunity to work with. I've seen the... opportunity to work with. I've seen the constructive positiveness that's happened within District 3, all of the things that this person has done to help out, walking through the district, helping out the business owners, and actually making a difference with multiple things. The reason why SCCIA runs so well, the farmer's market, the wine event, and all of the things that happens. I really have to wholeheartedly give my support to Joel. I really appreciate him. Love seeing him every single day in District 3. We're always walking. I see him downtown. I see him on Blanco. I see him in Star Market. I see him in Lucky's. It's just such a nice presence of seeing this person who truly cares about every person and really wanting to make a difference in our community. And I just really wanted to express that because I know that he's helped out many, many business owners, residents, and a lot of our community. This man has extreme amount of experience, and his resume is beyond belief. And I really appreciate him, and I just think his value is really, really there, and I hope you take that into consideration. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We have Astia on the line. Asia, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm Kim Lee, so I certainly understand the sensitivity to names. Asia?
No worries. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Evening, Madam Mayor and the council, and I just want to thank you all. I hope that within the next week, if anybody else steps down, that there'll be 11 other candidates ready to serve. So on one hand, we should be proud in this moment. I provided a letter to the council through the city clerk, and the numbers don't lie. While I am impressed with everyone who came forth tonight, and I appreciate the passion, as you all know, serving for your community is not an easy task, and it's often a thankless job. So I want to give credit where credit is due, and I want to honor the numbers. And as many have already said, it does take courage to want to fill a seat. But I hope to remember the other 10 folks in November. Kerry Swinson did take the leadership. She ran her own campaign. She was the incumbent. And I understand, for the sake of transparency, you all wanted to be here for three hours and allow our city to hear voices from District 3. So I want you all to just use your best judgment. And again, I hope to remember the other folks in November, but I know for a fact that Kerry ran her own campaign. She has diligently served on committees and is aware of the budget. And that's no disrespect to the other folks. But again, I think we all should just applaud the fact that if we're about civic engagement and social responsibility, we all did well tonight. But let's do the right thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we have Chago. You're up. You have a minute and a half. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm calling in in support for Jesus Valenzuela. Feels as if Jesus is ready for this, for this challenge that's ahead of him, or this challenge of filling that seat, the D3 seat. I understand Jesus has got a good, critical take on the scope and the needs of District 3, the dynamics of the residents there, his neighbors, and a good, open, a good, open take on its history and how the history will inform its future. So I'm calling in for support and support for Jesus Valenzuela. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Joe. Joe, you're up. Joe, are you on the line?
I am now. Can you hear me?
I can. Welcome.
Okay, my apologies. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I'll make this really quick. I have been working with Kerry for over 15 years now. I work for her at the Silken Learning Center. I'm also a teacher at San Jose State University. I teach classes about dinosaurs and rocks and things like that. I live in City in District 4, but I just know Kerry really well as a person. I want to throw my support behind her. She is just really smart. She's one of the most honest people I know. She's a really good boss. She's always involved in the community. She knows schools really well, has great connections. And she's, I just really enjoyed working with her for the past 15 years. And I just want to throw my support behind her. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Karen Araho. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I would like Karen Araho. I live in Salinas. I lived on Roosevelt Street in Alisal until 1984, and I've resided in District 3 by Central Park since then. I appreciate the council carrying out their duty per Section 2.7 and choosing the most conservative of the two. The appointee shall hold the office for the remainder of the unexpired term or until the next regular election or to fill the whole term. So it's just till the next election. Thank you for that. What an array of highly capable, competent people. I, too, am in support of Kerry Swinson. She got nearly 48% of the vote in the last election. It seems to make sense to meet the needs of people who want to forego a $300,000-plus special election or leave the seat empty. We don't want that. So good thinking. Let's have Kerry represent the district. Many qualified people, but I would like to see her in that position. And really liked what I heard from her. She's ready to go. Business owner, that's important, and she can carry forward with that voice. Thank you for weighing all the applicants and making the best decision. Appreciate your public
Thank you. We have Monica Andrade next.
Hello. Good evening, and I apologize, first of all, South County issues connectivity. Jesus will know all about it. Good evening, council, mayor, residents, and candidates. First of all, thank you to all the 11 applicants for this seat. Council, you really have your work cut out. My name is Monica Andrade, and I am a Salinas native. And although I do not, I reside in Salida, I am still very active in both my communities. My parents still reside here in Salinas, and thus, what happens in Salinas is still of very much high interest to me. Through my numerous community work, I have had the pleasure to work with both Kerry Swinson and Jesus Valenzuela. They are both amazing candidates, and I wholeheartedly believe Salinas will not be disappointed in the selection of either one of these candidates. Jesus brings a breadth of experience, and if picked, he will definitely bring a level of professionalism and commitment. He brings everything he's involved in. And I'm afraid that if picked, we will have to start searching for another community advisor. Kerry Swinson, she leads with heart and passion, and she has demonstrated time and time again, she is committed to the Salinas community. She brings a unique and diverse perspective to the council. She's a proven community leader, educator, small business owner. So, Salinas, we stand in solidarity with you and look forward to your selection and to the other candidates. I hope to engage you all in the future in collaboration to make Salinas a great place. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Nidia Soto.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Nidia Soto, y estoy aquí para dar las gracias a los miembros del Consilio por hacer esto posible. Y gracias a todas las personas que se postularon para este puesto, verdad, de ser concejales del Distrito 3. Pero más que nada, estoy aquí para decir acerca de Jesús Valenzuela. Él está preparado para ser concejal del Distrito 3. Tiene las ganas, el optimismo, ha sido enlace comunitario, ha sido un líder de la comunidad, de nuestra comunidad. Y más que nada, pues tiene el compromiso que está dando a nuestra comunidad de Salinas. Y como ustedes pudieron observar, él contestó muy bien para mí todas las preguntas que hicieron los concejales y la alcaldesa. Entonces, yo honestamente le doy como persona, este, mi gran apoyo a Jesús Valenzuela porque es una persona que tiene el corazón, el optimismo, y el compromiso para su comunidad. Para concejal del Distrito 3. Gracias. Buenas noches.
Hello. Good night. My name is Nidia Soto, and I'm here, first of all, to thank the council members, the mayor, for making this possible. I'm also, I thank all the people that are running for the council member seat for District 3. But mostly, I'm here to say that I'm here to support Jesus Valenzuela. He is prepared. He has the knowledge, and he knows what to do as a city council member. He has the heart, the optimism, and he is a community, he works with the community. He has a community liaison. He is an organizer. He is used to working with the community. He has the heart, the commitment. And as you all saw, the answers that the mayor and council members, the questions that the council members and the mayor did, he answered them very well. I think he did a very good job answering all the questions. And I think that he is a person that is ready. He has heart. He has optimism, community, and commitment to his community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Zoom user, Usuario de Zoom.
Bueno.
Bueno.
Sí, buenas noches.
Sí.
Buenas tardes. Continúe con su comentario. Tiene un minuto y 30 segundos.
Sí, mi nombre es Consuelo Rosales, y yo quiero también empatizar, que en realidad le doy, está muy preparado Jesús Valenzuela para quedar en el Distrito 3, porque es una persona muy honorable y es un enlace comunitario que siempre está apoyando a su comunidad. Y de mi parte, sé que es un ser muy humano, que siempre ha apoyado. Y él está muy comprometido con su comunidad, ya que es parte y sabe las necesidades que tiene Salinas, su gente. Y a mí me encantaría que él representara el Distrito 3. Gracias.
Yes, good night. My name is Consuelo Rosales, and I'm here really to support Jesus Valenzuela for representative of District 3. He is a very honorable person. He is very effective, and he's very committed. He is a great human being. He is a community liaison. And as a human being, he is very empathic. He is very committed to the community. He knows the community in Salinas. He knows the people. He knows our needs. And for me, I would love for him to represent District 3.
Okay, we have Romero next.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Romero Holomo, and I am a 24-year resident of the city of Salinas. I'm a District 3 resident. I want to congratulate all the candidates who stepped up today. It was impressive to hear so many people that want to take over the seat that was held by Steve McShane, who did a wonderful job in his, in many years of service to our district. When I think about all these wonderful candidates, one does stand out to me, and that is Kerry Swinson. Kerry stepped up and did run against our former councilman. Although she didn't win, she fell just below the 50% threshold. I think that warrants some consideration. I do believe that being a small business owner, being a rotarian, being an educator, being involved in the community, all count. That's no, it's not belittling any of the other candidates whatsoever. I think they are all good candidates in their own right. But Kerry just seems to stand head and shoulders above the rest, and I would welcome the city council's support for Kerry Swinson. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Gabby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Gabby, or Gabriela López Chavez. No relation to any of the other Chavez's spoken today, but I am really impressed with Dr. Chavez's resume and his experience and commitment. What I was really impressed with all the candidates was their commitment, and they're willing to represent us in District 3. Two individuals really spoke to me when they looked at their top three priorities, and that was Kerry Swinson and Mr. Valenzuela. They both spoke about community engagement or being, ensuring to be present for those of us who are residents in the district. And I think, given the limited amount of time that they will be in office, that's really a priority for me. So just wanted to make that known, and thank you very much for making this process possible.
Thank you. And I think we've had Mr. Guerra speak already on this item. I'll just ensure that, oh, all right. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and close public comment. I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Jim Pia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to transition the meeting, just give a little background. I want to transition it back to you. It's been structured. I am very grateful to city clerk Patricia and Alexis, and their comrade Juan Carlos J.C., who then was assisted by Officer Jim Godwin. So that's part of the process. And I want to thank Chris Callahan as this was set up for you. I want to thank and commend you six up here for your leadership from April 23rd to this moment. Many in the audience have told you that this was, this was well done. I concur with them. I'm not, so I'm giving a little special comment, but I say that because this has been a special meeting, literally and figuratively. Last time it happened was in 2002, 2002, with two members. We have 11 tonight, all wonderful folks. You have a tough choice. But I want to transition the public hearing that was scripted and helped out by your staff to, back to you, Mayor, to lead us home. And I am thankful for this evening, how it's gone. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, council, we have some decisions we need to make. I'll stick with continuity, and we'll go to council members' final comments, and we'll seek action. I'll start to my right, Councilmember Sornio.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for everybody coming in to be part of this. We definitely do have a tough task. I'm just, can't wait to see what my colleagues have to say. But there were a couple candidates that stood out to me, and that's Juan Chavez. Just being able to see, also be a part of seeing kind of his development and being the professional that he is today, also being able to see Kerry Swinson as well. Those are two folks. But then, you know, you can't go wrong with, you know, Mr. Fong and Ms. Karen and Joel Panzer. So I've just got to say that I'm just, I'm probably going to need a little bit more time to deliberate here. But honestly, everybody that came in today, I'm just so happy for District 3 and being able to have an opportunity to pick out a really good candidate. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrera.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, just real quick, there was a constituent that just mentioned that none of us were at the rent stabilization. I think what's important to be said as well, there were some of us that were in other community meetings. That was at a District 2 Montebello meeting. We had about 200 people, so that was the reason I wasn't at the rent stabilization. Very important meeting there. And Madam Mayor, my colleagues, I'm thinking about Mr., I'm looking at Mr. Joel Panzer. He and I, we've never gone out for coffee. I don't know him as a, his personal life. I know he likes to walk his dog. Mr. Panzer also ran for city council for District 3. I've seen, excuse me?
I said against Steve.
Against Steve.
And Janet Barnes.
And Janet Barnes. Thank you. And you know, and I know some of you have said that you all stand out. Because you know what? This is not easy. Some of you even said it's very nerve-wracking over here. It's nervous. So it is. But I commend all of you. But, you know, sometimes we don't know people. I heard somebody says, "I'm a people watcher." Well, I also watch people. And Mr. Panzer and I have never had coffee, but I've known the man for 20 years. He ran against, he ran for District 3. Mr. Panzer walks District 3. I don't know his politics, but I know his public service. And one of the important things as well, as we may say, we have young people in front of us. It's great. But we also have people that have a legacy of service that are also interested in continuing to serve. Mr. Panzer has been a champion, a giant, under the radar, creating marvelous events where they've come up with thousands and thousands of dollars for scholarships. Not only that, he's also a business owner. He's been involved with the business community. He is here continuously. He is here continuously bringing his comments and his concerns to this council. My first choice is going to be Mr. Panzer, and for the same reason is his knowledge, his service. He knows we, when he spoke, he knew the role of the electeds up here. He knows the role of the staff. So he's well-versed on the issues. I'm also going to look at Ms. Cameron. Ms. Cameron, you've worked with a variety of individuals, very diverse, and I've seen your work as well. I know your mother, but I don't know you, but I've seen your work. And I appreciate that the little things that maybe somebody might not take into consideration, like the sign that says that Chavez Library that's been missing, that's serious for that community. But I hope Mr. Jim Pia is listening to us. That sign needs to go up. $8,000, that's ridiculous. That sign needs to be up. It's going to take another year before it goes up. I hope not, but when you mention that, it might be just a simple sign, but it shows me that you have the pulse of the community. And that's way at the other corner of District III. And Ms. Cameron, I think what I've appreciated about what you said, that you have empathy and you have knowledge, and you've been in front of the public. So that is, that's important, and you do have knowledge about budgets. I'm also looking at Mr. Valenzuela. What I appreciate in Mr. Valenzuela, just like your brother said, tienes corazón. You have heart. Eres paisano. One of the things about you, Mr. Valenzuela, I remember meeting you, and you were a strong advocate against government, strong against government. And then all of a sudden, you find yourself working for government. And you find out, whoa, wait a minute. It's complicated. I think what I appreciate about you is your humility, whose ganas. And what I like is that you know, not only District III where you live, but you know the entire city. And now that you work for government, you know both sides. Not only do you know the community's strong advocacy, but you know how slowly government works. So I'm looking at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I too agree with my colleagues who have shared that they're grateful to see such a diverse group of people here today. I think that it really is a testament to the talent that we have here locally and really the desire that people have to serve their community. You all stepped up and, you know, put yourselves in this very sticky situation and needed to be vulnerable, needed to be vocal about what it was that mattered to you all. So I'm very grateful to have gone to know you through this process. Some I've known for years and years, others I'm meeting just tonight, but it's really great to see the wide variety of experiences and how near and dear the community of Salinas is to our hearts here. It's just a testament to how much we love our city. You know, I, I think one of the skills that I've learned to value most and that I see as most vital when it comes to our roles as city council members is finding a way to make government functions, city functions, processes, initiatives, general plans, budgets, accessible to the public, to make it understandable, to have it be something that can be digestible for the folks that don't have the hours and hours of time to read a 500-page budget or to read 85-page CIP budget. You know, it really takes someone who wants to create a more solid tether between the community and between local government. I really feel that we have a responsibility as members of this council to use local government as an equalizing force for the lives of our residents. Local government is the most intimate relationship you're going to have with a government entity living in any community. And it's for that reason that while I was very impressed by many of the candidates, I really do believe that Jesús Valenzuela will be an asset to this council. You know, I can appreciate the elections that have been run, the, the door knocking that has been done, the resident relationships. However, Jesús has been doing community and resident work for 10 years without the expectation of a seat here, but for the love of this community, for concern of this community. And to know that he's worked with the UFW, to know that he was a part of the early stages and throughout the Alsa Vibrancy Plan, the general plan, to know that he's worked with BHC, it really is a testament to me of how willing he is and how committed he is to keep District III engaged. He had clear and concise answers and actual plans of actions as to how he was going to go door-to-door, how he was going to make himself available to the public. And he said it himself, District III is an incredibly engaged area. It's going to take that level of commitment, and to me, it's clear that he's more than willing to meet the moment. So for that reason, he is my first choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval.
Yeah, this is, this is a very difficult, this is a very difficult decision. First, I want to commend all of you. You know, I see your hearts, your passion. I see the frustration. I share a lot of the same, those three things, a lot of frustration as well, but I also heard a lot of great ideas. I've seen a lot of your work in the community. I've seen your, your good intentions. You know, I commend the council. Thank you, city clerk, city manager, for our process. Not all cities have this kind of process. I think back recently, the city of Greenfield appointed somebody who was not even present to their city council. And I just want to commend this council. You would think it's shocking, but luckily we have an engaged community here in Salinas. You know, I, I appreciate the diverse, diverse approaches of things. Ms. McNulty, I, I think you'd make a great asset to this council. I think you bring a very different perspective, a lot of different life history. There's a lot of you. I thought I could name something off of each of you, but I, yeah. Mr. Fong, you've, you've had a long, a long dedication to Salinas. I see your passion and the many hours you've dedicated. David, I've only had one opportunity to speak with you. You speak your mind. I think one thing I remember you saying is, I'm not sure I could do this because I, I might say something I'm not supposed to. But on this council, I think we, we all know we need to say something. I mean, we should just say it. Mr. Chavez, I mean, your education, your passion, my historic resource board member, which I appointed recently, I could see her passion for our community. Mr. Valenzuela, Brad, you know, I know he's frustrated at the moment, but we need people not to get frustrated and to stay engaged. Okay? I just want to tell you all that. And I'll ask you here publicly, because I think you're all great candidates, will you stay engaged? Because the reality is only one person gets to sit in that seat. And if we have you all engaged along with the people who are here, trust me, Salinas will be a better place. My frustration, I'll be honest with all of you, is people are not engaged enough. You'll hear one piece of a media bite. You'll hear this. You'll hear controversial. You'll hear this. I call it democracy. We disagree. We just, I think, I think everyone on this council at one point has been on an opposite side of a vote. So make no mistake, everyone here is different. And so we want another, we want a teammate, but we don't need a yes person. We don't need, we want somebody who's going to bring outside perspectives. I don't know where this council's going to go with this appointment. I appreciate all of you. I'm really having a difficult decision, and I'm looking to my colleagues. I know Mr. Panzer's done a lot of great work. Ms. Carrero, I can see your passion. I mean, yes, I just want to commend the council one more time for this transparent process. And for everyone on YouTube and everywhere, please, continue to stay engaged. And if you have concerns about the way we vote, about what you heard about us, or how we think, my phone number is 831-837-8228. And I mean that honestly. Give us a call, not just for my constituents in, in my District Five. We do represent all of Salinas. You know, like I said, one of my frustrations is that wish more people would reach out to me. So often, I will reach out to people in hopes that they'll give me that opportunity. And I look forward to serving with one of you. Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to address something that councilmember Barrera mentioned at the start of his comments that I think is important. There was a comment made that members of this council didn't attend a meeting yesterday about rent stabilization. I didn't attend to maintain impartiality in the process, but just so we're clear, I made the request alongside councilwoman Gonzalez for rent stabilization to come before the city council. And I'm chair of the Housing and Land Use Committee, and I want to maintain impartiality in the process. Furthermore, I'll say, as we have discussions about the advocacy of this council and the passionate discussions of this council, I would just remind members of the public who speak on those issues to be mindful of the privilege they hold in these spaces and to check that privilege before they tell people of color to behave. I'm not a pet animal, and I'm not your child. And I owe it to the people that come before me and to the people who look like me to speak up when comments like that are made. Thank you. I want to say thank you to all the people who applied for this seat. It was really inspiring to read all about you and to see your dedication and passion for the city that we all call home. I haven't had the opportunity to work with all of you. Some of you I have had the opportunity to get to know. I interestingly served with Albert Fong on the Library and Community Services Commission back in 2017 when I was first appointed to that commission, and I've had the opportunity to work with you in several capacities since then. I've known Kerry for several years, and I certainly know her commitment to Salinas and in the many areas she's been involved. I've been able to work with Jesús Valenzuela on several issues. So many of you present very, I think, all of you present good, you know, attributes to bring to the council. For me, my top choices would be Kerry Swenson, Jesús Valenzuela, and Karen Cameron and Albert Fong. I believe that all of you brought really important things forward. What stood out for me about all of you was your commitment to putting the priorities of the community first. So if I had to score in terms of more of a specific, that we don't have basically listing most candidates, but it would be Kerry Swenson, Jesús Valenzuela, and Karen Cameron. That would be the top three for me, and then followed by Albert Fong. I want to point out that Karen Cameron, you brought up a lot of things that I think would be good about equity and how we proceed as a city. I think that's really important. Jesús Valenzuela, you have a lot of experience in community engagement, labor organizing. I think that your experience working in a city government would allow for you to jump into the seat and have a seamless transition into the role. And Kerry Swenson, you ran for the seat, and it's very evident by the many people that came out to this meeting to voice their support for you. And that's really important. I was a little skeptical coming into this meeting in terms of what the decision I was going to make, especially as it related to your, as it related to your appointment, because of the fact I did support you when you ran for the seat in 2022. And I want to be mindful of that and the optics of that. But I really have to say, my opinion was swayed by hearing all the people who spoke up for you and who voted for you in District III. A lot of people said that they put up signs for you, they voted for you, and the two constituents from District Six that came to this meeting voiced their support for you, and I represent District Six as well. So you are my top choice for the seat, and I really admire your work as an educator, as a small business owner, and your involvement on various boards and committees, namely the Housing Advisory Committee for the county and most recently the Measure G Committee for the city. I think that those top three would be my top choices for the seat, and I think you would do great, and I would look forward to serving with anyone who's appointed to this seat. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just take a brief moment. I know it's a long night. Welcome to city council, right? Like, this is the, this is the dry run for all of you. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge each and every one of you. Joel Panzer, I certainly have known you for over 20 years. Councilmember Barrera is right. I see you walking your dog everywhere. You have been an incredible volunteer, the first one in, particularly for South Salinas. And I'm incredibly appreciative of your volunteerism. That's how I got started in politics, is because I just raised my hand for anything that I could volunteer for in the city. And so I very much appreciate your consistent work with our community. Dr. Chavez, I just want to say thank you. Your words spoke to me when you talked about safety, particularly for our community and education and your desire to serve the people and that it is the people's seat. That is the right attitude to have as a council member. Ms. McNulty, thank you very much. Your stance on homelessness and making sure that there is visibility with every sector of the city is really important. It's important to me, it's important to this council, and it's important to the community. I want to acknowledge your comments about drawing employers and businesses in. In order to provide the services for our residents, we need to be able to expand our revenue, and that is an area that we need to really focus on. So I just want to say thank you for recognizing that and particularly for your understanding of modern law enforcement. Very much appreciate that. Albert Fong, you have been on a commission since I've known you. So I would just say, for people who give their time and energy and effort for so many years, thank you for that. Sat on Library and Community Services Commission. As you mentioned, Mayor Joe Gunter had appointed you. Your desire to beautify our neighborhoods, to create a safer community, and to focus on parks is not lost on any of us. So thank you for stepping forward. David Masony, your review of spending, I appreciate the sarcasm and humor. Your concerns on homelessness and doing things with fiscal responsibility is really key. There are no open checkbooks here at City Hall, so very much appreciate your clear perspective on that. Kerry, I know that you ran for council in 2022. I know that you've spoken with a lot of District III residents. Your desire to be transparent through this process is really important, and communication is key. Also sidewalks, too. Obviously, District III has a lot of those skateboard ramps for sidewalks. And that will be critical when we're talking about ARPA funding and whatnot to fix our streets and our, our sidewalks. Christina, thank you for stepping forward and being so transparent, very courageous of you. I appreciated your comments about families with young children, doing more activities for them, having them be STEM-based related activities, and also to draw tourism into Salinas. I sit on the C-Monterey Board. That's an incredible board that's working really hard to increase the visibility of Salinas. So thank you for recognizing that as a, as an attribute for our community. Mr. Clinton, I totally appreciate you. I want you to know, I appreciate your passion. I appreciate your, your frustration. It's what got me to run for city council. My car got stolen. That's how I ran when in 2010. The sidewalks in the city are abysmal. We recognize that. Thank you for bringing light to that. I want to say thank you for acknowledging that as a representative of District III, you're a representative of the entire city, not just District III. So thank you. Mr. Valenzuela, I just want to say thank you for all of the work that you've done as a community organizer. Certainly, we sit in the shadow of 2014. I'd like to think that the city has evolved tremendously in the last 10 years. Your work in Solidad, I'm sure, has given a greater perspective of what government does. I like your idea of hosting citizens academies and certainly engaging in, with the residents, resident engagement. Karen, I was incredibly impressed with you, with your comments about addressing homelessness. I appreciate the ability, your ability to work with diverse and underserved communities. I learned a lot about you tonight, so thank you. Building an inclusive, collaborative, and democratic culture within the council and within the city, and your willingness to seek grants to bringing businesses and whatnot to Salinas, that was really impressive. Ms. Shim, I always appreciate your public comment. Your, your wish for transparency and accountability, I think, is spot on. Addressing affordable housing is absolutely a major priority of this council and certainly is in alignment with what we're working on, homelessness, and very much appreciate your dedication to historic preservation. I know that you came up to me at a meeting a while back and you said, "Is there a spot? I want to be on, on the Historic Resources Board," and very much appreciate your willingness to serve. And what I will just acknowledge, and councilmember Sandoval alluded to it, we have commissions and committees that have openings. And so if there's an opportunity that you have a passion over animal shelters or over the Police Advisory Committee or, you know, Planning Commission, we have multiple vacancies. And so we'd love to see you step forward into those roles. With that, I think we've had all of our comments. I do need to seek action from this council, and so I'll be looking for a motion.
Thank you, everyone. I move to appoint Kerry Swenson to the District III vacancy. I move to appoint Kerry Swenson to the District 3 vacancy.
Okay, we have a motion made by councilmember Rocha to appoint Kerry Swenson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
No.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
No.
Councilmember Osornio?
No.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. We got to appoint someone, so...
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Angela McNulty.
I'll second.
I'll make a substitute motion to appoint Jesus Valenzuela to the District 3 vacancy.
I second the substitute motion.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion made by councilmember -- let me go back and correct. We have a -- we have -- hang on. We have a motion made by councilmember Sandoval for an appointment for Ms. McNulty, seconded by me, Mayor Craig. Then we have a substitute motion made by councilmember Rocha to appoint Jesus Valenzuela, seconded by councilmember Gonzalez. So any further discussion on that?
Can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, sorry. Okay, so our motion, councilmember Sandoval's motion is on hold. We must take the substitute motion first, according to Robert's Rules of Order. So we will take the substitute motion of councilmember Rocha, who is nominating Jesus Valenzuela for the appointment, and it's seconded by councilmember Rocha. Or, excuse me, councilmember Gonzalez. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We have a new council member. Thank you, everyone. All right, and with that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. We'll see you on June 11th.